Hear me here? All right, first problem solved. That's a good start. So here we are this. Here in the council chamber, we have council member Salinas, council member Lamben and council members Armano and on Zoom with us this evening, we have council members. Marquez, Andrews and Wahab. So we are all here but and we are also webcasting this meeting on Comcast TV channel 15 and live streaming it on the city's YouTube channel and the city website. And so and we will be explaining later how you can make a public comment either way. But with that, I'm going to ask Councilmember Salinas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. And I will say, we also have a number of members of our staff with us here this evening, including our city clerk, Maryam Len. So Madam City Clerk, would you please call the role?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Lamben.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Salinas. Councilmember Wahab. Councilmember Sir Mano.
Present.
Mayor Halliday.
Here.
Thank you.
And now I'll ask our city attorney, Mr. Lawson, to give us the closed session announcement. I think it's going to be given to us by Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Brick.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe Brick, Assistant City Attorney. I'll be making the announcement today as I was present in closed session. Today, the council met in closed session at 5:30 PM on September 28, 2021, to discuss, number one, an anticipated litigation matter. It was one matter pursuant to the public notice. With all members present, the council took no reportable action. The second item on today's closed session agenda was property negotiation involving Route 238, Parcel Group Six pursuant to the posted notice with Mayor Halliday recusing herself. The council took no reportable action in the closed session adjourned today at 6:45 PM. That concludes the announcement.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to public comments. So let me start by saying that city council members and members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature, and I will call upon them at the appropriate time. And members participating via teleconference wishing to speak should dial star nine, and they will be called by the last four digits of their phone number. In-person participants here who wish to speak should have already scanned the QR code located in the back of the room and completed an online speaker card via their phones. The city, and if you've done that, the city clerk will add your names to the list of members wanting to speak. The city has also this evening received requests for interpretation service in both Mandarin Chinese and Spanish. And so as requested, we are providing this service via Zoom for public comment and the public hearing item 10. So participants will need to select the Chinese channel or the Spanish channel to listen to the interpreters, and all Zoom participants must click the interpretation icon in the meeting controls and select either English, Chinese, or Spanish. And I think that is important, that if you are listening in English and you are on Zoom, you should click, because we are in other languages tonight. Be sure to look down there and click the English. And so with that, Madam City Clerk, do we have speakers this evening? I'm not seeing anything come up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we have three speakers. If you please give me a moment.
Okay, do you want me to call? Okay, so I'm seeing Sally Thomas at the top of the list? Okay, Sally Thomas. I can't tell whether people are online or in room.
Mayor, if you like, I could go ahead and call the individuals via my live manager, and then you'll see the name of the individual on the screen, if that makes it easier.
Yes, I'm not, I'm only seeing the names on the Zoom attendees. I'm not seeing any any other names on my iPad here, so.
All right, if you. So what I'll do, because we have individuals who are in person who submitted the request to speak.
Yes, I'm not seeing those names.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and if you allow me to call.
Please, please go ahead.
Okay, we have Colleen. If you, if you're here, Colleen, you see your name on the screen? All right, thank you. So that's for item number 10. We'll come back to you. Thank you. You have Patricia Davis. All right, thank you. That's also for number 10. We have Suzanne Phyllis.
Hi, good evening. Welcome back to City Hall. My name is Suzanne Phyllis. I live at 239 St. Andrew Street. I'm also Senior Secretary here at the city, and I am also the SEIU Clerical Chapter President. I'm here tonight just to let you know that today we had a coalition rally out front. We all wore our colors. We are representing. We are still hoping, you know, Local 21 has settled their contract. SEIU and HAM is still pending. We're still asking for authorization to be expanded so that we can negotiate contracts that will leave us all feeling valued and heard and and happy to move forward. So I'm just here tonight just to say hello, welcome back. Glad to see everybody in person. And don't forget, we're out here. We're still waiting to resolve these contracts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, and Ms. Lenz is going to call the next speaker?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We now have Evelyn. Could you please come forward?
I did. Okay, thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everybody. I am Evelyn R. Olivera. I work in the City Manager's Office for the divisions, both divisions, housing and community services. And been working for the city of Hayward for three years. I'm very proud of the fact that our bargaining groups are coming together to put forward for a quality of life that nobody's seen, just trying to get back to some kind of normalcy. And one thing that I did want to bring up, dealing with contracts all the time, I am exposed to federal income levels for HUD. And I just wanted to point out for 2021 in Alameda County, for one person, a one-person household, your income can be $50,000 and you qualify. Well, I have a family of five. I'm the sole income, and that level is $118,000. I won't, I don't have to tell you how much I make. However, encourage and help, you know, people understand our side of the work, supporting our communities. Me myself, I did work for the call center, helping folks get straight, get to their food distribution, help them with housing resolutions, eviction nightmares, and all these such things. And unfortunately, I can empathize a little more than I should have. But thank you, and I'm very proud of the coalition, and thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. And that was the last speaker, in-person speaker. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
So we're going to move to the Zoom speakers, and we have Sally Thomas.
Okay, hi, thank you so much. My name is Sally Thomas, and I am a supervising librarian at Hayward Public Library. I'm speaking as a library manager and member of HAM, who started here in Hayward as a part-time librarian in 2007. I, like my colleagues in management across Hayward City departments, want to urge you to support a fair and equitable contract, not just for management, but for city staff at all levels. Your willingness to demonstrate your support at this juncture will help assure that we retain the talented and dedicated staff who are already working hard to serve the Hayward community and attract new talent who will recognize that the city of Hayward truly values and appropriately rewards its staff. Having worked for the city of Hayward for 14 years, I've seen a lot of changes. We've weathered some really tough times, and in all honesty, I haven't always supported decisions and actions made by our city government leaders and executive staff. I've seen talented staff leave to take positions in other Bay Area cities as a consequence of actions by city leaders that have demonstrated a serious lack of support. But now I am glad to say with sincerity that I think we've never been in a better place in terms of having the best executive leadership and city management and vision and dedication in place in city council, in the city council and mayor's office. Librarians and library staff at all levels are typically drawn to our profession out of a desire to serve and support the dreams and aspirations of our community members. We often turn away from more lucrative careers for the ideal of public service and for the heartwarming non-financial rewards we receive from the people we serve every single day. We are reminded every day that Hayward residents depend on the core services we provide, and that knowledge fuels our dedication to serve this community. But as the Bay Area becomes ever more expensive to live and raise a family, it can be difficult to stay in this field. I've seen colleagues leave, including a really talented staff member who joined our team a few years ago, who's made the tough decision to leave because she and her husband can't afford to raise their families in Hayward, their family in Hayward. When we learned from the recent salary survey that over 50% of HAM classifications are below market, that's really hard. To know that the average HAM salary is 11% below market, that's really tough. To know that since 2015, we have seen our pay fall more than 5%, 5% behind the Consumer Price Index, that's really hard. For my younger colleagues, it is tough to afford to buy a home, support childcare costs, and weather lean times. At my age, it's challenging to plan and save for retirement. So we ask you, I ask you, to direct city negotiators to bargain in good faith, to grant fair colas and other contract requests. Direct them to estimate costs fairly and accurately without overestimating them. We want to get back to work giving our community the services it needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have RT.
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yes. Now we can't. RT, are you there?
I can be put back in the queue.
We're hearing you in the council chambers.
Yes, this is our agenda item number 10, my public.
Okay, we have not gotten to that item yet. So we will put you into the, we will, please, when we get to that item, which shouldn't be too long, re-enter. How about Saad Mohammed? Oh, wait, wait a minute. I'm sorry, before him, Danny, Danny Magal Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Danny McGallas. I'm a proud member of the city of Hayward's workforce. I am the maintenance supervisor at the Water Pollution Control Facility, the award-winning Water Pollution Control Facility. I am also Vice President of HAM. Today, we had lunch with our brothers and sisters in IFPTE, Local 21, SEIU 1021, and the members of HAM. And I looked around and I saw the people who are responsible for so many projects in the city of Hayward. The recycled water facility and pump station at the plant, along with eight miles of piping that will be used to distribute this water, the library, all the activity we see on 238 Mission Boulevard. And I look around and I see managers, I see clerical staff, I see management analysts, engineers, planners, inspectors, equipment operators, utility field service folks, utility mechanics, operators, and all of our maintenance staff working together. We have been the architects of several successful projects in Hayward, overseeing contractors and getting in there and mixing it up ourselves. We're also on a new project today. It's a project to be recognized, to be valued, to be shown that we are worthy. Our negotiation did not start well, which led us to join together, because we have been the, a team that has built so many successful projects in the city of Hayward. We want to get together to make sure we can get the best contracts we can. This, this coalition is very serious and very dedicated to each other. The folks in Local 21, although they've settled, they still continue to support us and stand by our sides. The discrepancies in the organizational structure and the pay structure are dumbfounding today. Equities have not occurred in the HAM group. We have tried for the last several years to get equities and do salary surveys, and we were met with a response that it was not obligated and that no promises were broken. However, we have bargained in good faith and paid for half this salary survey through our memberships pockets to try and come up with an equitable, equitable plan. Today, what I'm asking is that city council gives a latitude to the people across the bargaining table to help us reach an agreement. We are closer than we were before, and we are, we are on our way to a good settlement here. In the words of my brothers and sisters in SEIU, respect us, protect us, invest in us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now Saad Mohammed?
I believe I'm unmuted now.
I can hear you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. And thank you for taking Danny before me, because this is really about the employees. I'm a field representative staff of SEIU Local 10-1, representing maintenance and clerical chapters. Danny spoke well, and last week, you heard many of our members in HAM and 21 and SEIU speak as well about the invaluable services provided. We, like Danny said, today we were out there at lunch, having lunch with our coalition brothers and sisters at FD 21, Local 21, which represents more than 100 workers, HAM, nearly 100 city workers, and ourselves, over 300 workers. You may know by now, the Hayward residents who depend, you know, on these core services we provide, they stood behind our coalition. You know, hundreds of them have signed our petition, which, which you've been made privy to. Thousands visit our booths at the farmer's market, the downtown reopening and ribbon cutting. This is because they hear the, 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 you know, what the workers and employees are going through in terms of trying to get to a fair settlement with the city around the successor collective bargaining agreements. As, as Danny said, there has been movement, and we, while we appreciate that movement, we have a, we have a long, we have a long way to go ahead of us if the city council doesn't direct the city team to close this out. And I think the authority they have has, has not been sufficient enough for us to reach a settlement. And what we're asking for is fair. We've actually greatly pared down, you know, where we're at in the spirit of closure. And we just asked the city council to direct the city to do the same and meet us at a fair place. Like I said, we appreciate the authority you've given so far, but it has not brought us to closure. What we are asking for is not much at this point. We've been asking for more, but, but now we're at a place where, you know, I believe the city, the employees working together can make this happen. And so, you know, over the, the next weeks, the next city councils, you know, you'll be hearing from us, and we hope, we hope it's celebratory, right, where we can move past this point. Like Danny Suzanne said, we are in coalition because of these.
Thank you, Saad.
Thank you for your time.
Now we have TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens.
I forgot what I was going to say. Please come back to me.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, okay. Hi. It's TJ with here concerned citizens. I just, I wanted council to be aware. Well, welcome back, first of all. And I wanted you to be aware that none of the Zoom comments are audible on YouTube. No, we, it's just a long, long silence. So I just wanted you to be aware that none of the, the Zoom comments are audible to, to anyone watching on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if we can do anything about that, but right now.
We're, we're working on that issue, but the council members and the council, in the chambers and the council members who are listening on Zoom are able to hear all the public comments. So we're going to keep proceeding. We apologize for those who are watching on YouTube. In the live stream, we're trying to resolve that issue, but the council members can hear all the public comments.
Okay. And fine, well, and let's see, Patrick, Patrick?
Please come back to me. I apologize.
Well, you're the last person under public comments. Did you want to make a public comment on items not on the agenda or on an item that's on the agenda? Okay. Yes, we have lost him. All right, with that, seeing no further requests, either here in the room or on Zoom to speak, I'm going to close public comments on items not otherwise on the agenda. And we will now move to comments from our city manager. Macadoo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be back in the council chambers. I had a bit of a surreal experience yesterday coming back in here for the first time in 18 months. Just to reiterate, for those who didn't hear my comment just a minute ago, we know that there is a technical glitch and that the Zoom public commenters, you cannot hear their comments on the live stream or on YouTube. But the council members who are here in the chambers and the ones who are participating on the Zoom application can hear all of those public comments. So that, and we are recording all of those public comments. So when we rebroadcast the full meeting, all of those public comments will be available. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware and that the council members can hear all of the public speakers, even if those watching the YouTube broadcast cannot. If you would like to listen to the public comments, I would recommend you log into the Zoom platform or call into the Zoom phone number on the agenda. So a couple other just public city manager comments I wanted to announce. I did want to remind the community that there is financial assistance available still for back rent payments and utility expenses, even though the state COVID-19 eviction moratorium is ending as of September 30. The rent relief program will remain in place for some period of time. And so that, under that state program, residents and households that are earning 80% or less of the area median income are eligible to have all unpaid rent and utilities covered back to April 1 of 2020. There's still a lot of funding available. And so we want to make sure that landlords and tenants are both aware of that and taking advantage of those resources to ensure that no one is losing their home at this time, once the eviction moratorium expires. Our staff is also reaching out to our landlord community, and we have a lot of services to provide. So if you have any questions, our housing staff can help as well, and that phone number is 510-583-4454, or housing@hayward-ca.gov. And then there's also resources on the county's housing department website. On a little bit lighter note, we did just receive the city's most recent pavement condition index. For all of you technical wonks out there, the city has a pavement condition index of 70, which is categorized by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission as good. The PCI is measured on a scale of 0 to 100, and so 70 is actually a very good score for paving. Late earlier this year in June, the city council awarded $11.4 million in a construction contract to pave 89 street segments. In this current year, we're scheduled to spend another $11 million, and this comes from gas tax and Measure B funds, as well, as well as vehicle registration funds. So just wanted to share that. And we also have added some equity lenses to our distribution of city services. And so we are looking and expanding our street selection criteria this year that will include streets and areas that the city may have not, that where those streets may have not received fair share of pavement improvements in the past. And so that will be added to the city's street selection criteria moving forward. So those are my announcements this evening, and good to see everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to our action items. But first of all, but first, Councilmember Wahab, you have your hand up. Was that for a public comment?
That was for our city manager, if she can answer one question.
Okay, go ahead.
To our city manager, the eviction moratorium that the county put in place, did we get a final answer to my question earlier in the sense of if there's superseded seeds the cities or are we on the state timeline? And that is a question that a lot of our real estate community has.
Correct. We do not believe that the county moratorium applies to the city of Hayward because we are a charter city, but really, individuals should seek legal advice independent. We obviously cannot offer legal advice for individual landlords or tenants on that particular matter, but that is, that is our, our interpretation of, of the county moratorium at this point.
And there's also funding available to our housing provider community as well, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we are going to move to our action items. And first, we will take up our consent calendar, which this evening is items one through nine. Madam City Clerk, are you aware of any requests from the public to speak on any of these items or remove any of them from the consent calendar? And I will ask the same of council. I can see people on Zoom. If you put your hand up, and I see, okay, and I see Councilmember Wahab. You guys, I think I'm going to have to ask you to just.
I'll move on the item.
Mayor Halliday, if I may.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm right here. Thank you. If I may, I don't know if we have any members in our audience wishing to pull any of those items on the consent calendar. I haven't received any requests to speak, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak up now if you have a comment on any item on the consent calendar, items one through nine. No.
Anyone? Okay, seeing no one. I do see Councilmember Wahab's hand up, so go ahead.
Just number seven and number nine, a quick question to our city manager slash Public Works Director. For number seven, are we, we're analyzing traffic flow, correct?
That is correct. The, the, this system is basically monitors intersections and automatically adjusts the uh automatically adjusts the signal timing based on the traffic flow that is coming through the intersection um so that engineers don't have to go out and change the timing.
Okay, and we already have this in in other parts of the city as well, right?
Correct. It is pretty much all along the Foothill Mission Boulevard corridor.
All right. Um, thank you, and I'm I'm happy to move uh items one through nine.
A second, Mayor. That was Marquez.
Okay, um, okay, so items number, item numbers one through nine have been moved by Councilmember Wahab and seconded by Councilmember Marquez. Um, seeing no requests to speak from council at this point, um, I will ask Ms. Luntz to call the uh to do a roll call vote.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Lemnan.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab.
Yes.
Councilmember Sir Manu.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes with seven aye votes. Uh, items um one through nine are approved. Now, we're going to move to item number 10. This is a um and and before we do, I'm going to call on Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. I will have to recuse myself from this item as a previous employer had interest in this project. So I would like to recuse myself from this item.
All right, and we, I think, uh, we'll have the city manager, if you're not watching, text you when, well, she's left us, but we can call her back when uh when we're done.
Correct, I will do that.
Okay, so this item is regarding a parcel group three of that. This is parcel group three of the Caltrans properties that we've been taking up over the last few years. Um, and this is regarding uh um an appeal um to the uh Planning Commission approval of the La Vista residential development. Um, and also regards the primary school, another uh aspect of that of that um development. And so I will go ahead and turn this over first to um to our Assistant City Manager and Development Services Director, Ms. Ott.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Mayor Holliday, I apologize. Uh, I just wanted to announce that we are offering interpretation service for this item, item number 10. So we have interpreters both in Chinese and Spanish that are in the different channels via Zoom. So attendees uh who have joined via Zoom are able to listen to this item in either English, Chinese, or Spanish. I just wanted to make that announcement for the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Ott.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm going to turn this over to Senior Planner Elizabeth Blanton. But before I do, just want to let the council know that there are a number of issues in the appeal that were raised that are technical issues. We have a whole host of consultants and technical cons um experts uh available to answer your questions um as well as the fire chief who's here as well to answer your questions. I just wanted you to know that we have a team of people here um if you have questions about it.
Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the council, Elizabeth Blanton, Senior Planner. Um, as Assistant City Manager Ott just said, the item we'll be reviewing this evening is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the site plan review, administrative use permit, and density bonus application for parcel group three. Um, in 2018, the city council authorized the city to enter into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with Eden Housing and the Pacific Companies based on their proposal to construct um 150 affordable housing units or more, at least 150, and a public community school on the parcel group three properties. So in my presentation this evening, I'll begin with an overview of the proposed project, which is consistent with this council-approved conceptual plan. And then I'll provide a summary of the appellant's grounds for appeal as well as staff's responses to those concerns. So parcel group three is located just north of Tennyson Road and east of 16th Street. And as you can see by the dotted circle on this map, the project site is within a half mile of the South Hayward Bart Station as well as the future La Vista Park, which is a 50-acre park currently in the development type pipeline. Uh, other surrounding development and land uses include some single-family development to the northwest and some multifamily development to the south and to the west. The red dotted line on this figure shows the approximate location of the proposed development, which, as you can see, is clustered in the southwest corner. The remainder of parcel group three land that is not part of the proposed development will be transferred to the city as part of the project's development agreement. And this allows for the significant extent expansion of La Vista Park, providing more direct park access for that neighborhood around 16th Street. Now, the reason the development is clustered in this way is due to the significant environmental constraints across the site. So as you can see from this map, which I should mention has shifted our perspective, so north is now pointing to the left. Um, there are fault traces, landslide areas, and steep topography across much of the site. So as a result, the only part of the property upon which there is room to develop is that southwest corner. A parcel group three falls within multiple zoning districts and general plan land use designations. But as you can see here, the proposed development is exclusively within the medium-density residential zoning district and the limited medium-density residential general plan designation. Additionally, the site is within the Foothill Trail Overlay District, also known as SD7, which basically requires a bike and pedestrian trail through the area. Uh, so here we can see the proposed site plan. Two residential buildings are proposed, which are highlighted here in red. Uh, the buildings will house a total of 176 affordable rental units, which include moderate, low, and very low-income units. And unit sizes will range from studios all the way up to three-bedroom units to provide flexibility for households of various sizes. Uh, there are a total of 183 dedicated parking spaces for the housing portion of the site. The school facility is split into two components. There's a standalone elementary school building and then an approximately 11,000-square-foot early education center on the ground floor of one of the residential buildings. And there are 50 additional dedicated school parking spaces. Uh, for site access, there will be three vehicular access points to the site. Residents will primarily access the site from 16th Street via two separate entry points. And school users, including parents dropping off and picking up kids, will only be able to access the site via Tennyson. The proposed development also provides pedestrian and bike connections to those high-quality trails of the future La Vista Park via a couple different pathways, which are shown on this slide. And as part of the development agreement for this project, the applicant will be paying their fair share of the construction cost of the Foothill Trail, which will run through the adjacent La Vista Park property. Now, access to Bart for bikes and pedestrians is provided via two primary routes. The first, which is shown here, uh connects the southern portion of the site by the school to Tennyson via both a curving driveway and a set of stairs. Uh, this route features both existing and planned bike facilities along Tennyson, and it's approximately a third of a mile in length, so it's relatively close. Now, for cyclists that maybe are not as comfortable navigating a street that's as busy as Tennyson or that has the topography of Tennyson, there's also an alternate path from the northern end of the project site by the residential parking. This would take Hancock and East 12th Street. This route is a little bit flatter terrain. There's quieter streets. It's a little bit longer. It's about a half mile, but still uh not too large of a distance, still fairly close. The following renderings show what the proposed development would look like. Uh, this view shows the two residential buildings, each of which is five stories tall. The building design features a mix of materials and sleek, modern colors to provide visual interest. The elementary school is about a two-story structure, which uses varied planes and materials, a prominent awning, and a gentle color palette. And I should mention that there are also two school play areas located on either side of this building, one of which includes an outdoor eating area and a small amphitheater space. For in Tennyson and Mission, the project maintains a relatively low profile thanks to the positioning of the school building closest to the steep embankment along Tennyson. And the proposed residential buildings are clustered adjacent to some existing three-story residential buildings, which are the yellow structures that you can see in this image. Across the street, um, there are, across the street, I should say, on 16th Street, there are some single-family homes, which we're kind of standing next to in this image. And as you can see, next to the single-family homes, there will be a little bit of the end of the surface parking lot and then the development of La Vista Park, so kind of maintaining an open space feel. From La Vista Park, the future La Vista Park, if we imagine we're standing in the park, the development will be visible, but it would not block the park's stunning views of the city, the bay, and the peninsula beyond. Now, as part of their entitlement application, the applicant requested a density bonus of 19% above what would typically be allowed in the RN zoning district. Given the site's proximity to South Hayward Bart, state density bonus law would actually allow unlimited density for this project. So the requested 19% is somewhat modest by comparison. Uh, the project also requested a height increase of 23 feet for the residential buildings. Again, this is allowed by state density bonus law. And the project is providing, as I mentioned earlier, 183 residential parking spaces, which far exceeds the 88 parking spaces that state density bonus law would allow the city to require of the project due to its proximity to Bart and its levels of affordability. Uh, finally, the project is requesting three concessions or incentives, which, again, permitted by state law. Uh, first, a reduction in the amount of open space, which in this case is especially appropriate, given that La Vista Park is next door. Uh, a reduction in the rear yard setback, which again is due to those tight site constraints we were looking at the beginning. And then reduce compliance with the city's reach code requirements for EV charging infrastructure, which I'll go over in a slide or two. And now the state adopted new housing legislation in 2019, which you're probably all familiar of, but it's known as SB 330. Uh, for the benefit of all, basically, this law says that if you have a housing project, including a mixed-use housing project, which this one is, um, and it complies with all of the objective standards of the general plan and zoning ordinance, then the city must approve that project. So, looking at the objective standards for this project, we can see that the proposed development meets all of them. Um, in some cases, using density bonus allowances, but that is permitted by state law. So this includes meeting the objective standards for density, height, parking, among others. Further, the project meets and in several cases exceeds the sustainability requirements of the building code and the city's reach code. So all three buildings will be electric, all-electric, and there will be solar panels installed on the residential buildings, which exceeds building codes and reach code requirements. Now, while the project requested a density bonus concession related to electric vehicle infrastructure, it still proposes to exceed building code requirements by providing a mix of EV-ready infrastructure and EV-charging stations on-site. The proposed public community school would be the second location of the primary school, whose first location is in East Palo Alto. It would serve up to 384 students from pre-kindergarten through fifth grade. And in addition to a strong school program, the primary school is unique in that it offers a range of services, including medical, dental, and mental health care, social services, and a robust parent wellness program. Uh, the primary school would actively target recruitment towards low-income families who would most benefit from the organization's approach and supports. And this would include direct outreach to the families living in the residential buildings just next door. Uh, addendum to the general plan EIR was prepared to assess whether the proposed project would cause the need for any major revisions to the EIR. And it was determined that the project was within the scope that was originally analyzed in the general plan EIR and will not result in any new or more severe significant environmental effects. So as a result, no new mitigation measures are required. Staff has received input from several members of the public throughout the planning process via emails, phone calls, and comments at a couple of virtual public meetings. Uh, public comments have reflected both support as well as concerns about the project. And the appellants echo most of their, these concerns listed here in their stated grounds for appeal, so I'll address those in great detail in a moment. On July 22nd, the Planning Commission approved the proposed entitlement application with a five-to-one vote. Uh, in their discussion, and the meeting minutes are attached to this agenda item, the commission expressed support of the affordable housing, the project's proximity to Bart and La Vista Park, and the school's extensive wraparound services. Though they approved the project, some commissioners also shared concerns about the prox, the project's proximity to fault lines, the topographical challenges of accessing Bart from that side on Tennyson, uh, the amount of parking for the project, and the height of the residential buildings. Several members of the public spoke at the meeting, uh, the vast majority of which were in support of the project, though there were some concerns expressed about street lighting along 16th Street and solar access to the adjacent multifamily development. So on August 2nd, the Planning Commission's approval of the project was appealed by a group of neighbors. And a similar, a summarized list of their stated grounds for appeal is shown here. The full appeal documents received by the city, along with two petitions with approximately 160 signatures, is included as attachments three and four to this agenda item. Since the purpose of tonight's hearing is to review the appellant's stated grounds of appeal, these six topics are what the council should focus on when making a decision as to whether uphold or to deny the appeal. In the discussion section of the staff report, staff has provided detailed responses to each of the appellant's stated grounds for appeal, which we'll walk through now. Uh, first, the appellant states a concern about the project's proximity to the fault line and questions whether proper seismic hazard analysis has been conducted by qualified technical experts. Though a fault hazard evaluation and a geotechnical exploration for the project has been completed by consulting firm NGO. Uh, these documents, which are attached to this agenda item, conclude that the site is suitable for the proposed development, provided that the report's recommendations are incorporated into the project. Uh, this notably includes the construction of a pair of buried reinforced keyways immediately up slope of the project. And these will serve to help stabilize the hillside in a ground-shaking event. Uh, moreover, the project complies with all of the objective standards related to proximity to fault traces, meaning that per SB 330, denial of the project on these grounds would go against the requirements of the Housing Accountability Act. Um, Senior Engineer Scott Wickstrom and some representatives from the consulting firm NGO, sorry, everyone, um, are on hand to answer any questions the council may have on this topic. Secondly, the appellate group states that many residents nearby the project site were unaware of the proposed project. Over the course of the past year and a half, um, staff has sent out three different postcard mailings on this project. While the municipal code only requires notification of neighbors within a 300-foot radius, staff actually expanded that to a 500-foot radius for the second two mailings, which over, uh, more than doubled the number of postcards sent out. Additionally, the applicant hosted a pair of community meetings via Zoom, giving neighbors further opportunity to ask questions and express concerns. So these outreach efforts went above and beyond what is required in a good-faith effort to reach as many interested neighbors as possible. Uh, third, the appellate group states concern about the traffic congestion this project may cause, particularly along Tennyson and 16th Street. A local transportation analysis for the project was prepared by Transportation Consultant Kittleson and Associates. Um, and that is also attached to this agenda item. The recommendations included in the LTA were incorporated as conditions of approval. And for example, this includes the requirement that the applicant submit a transportation demand management plan as part of the building permit process. Uh, they need to install an inbound left turn lane into the project site on Tennyson to help alleviate some of that school pickup and drop-off queuing that could occur. And there will also be required to install some new high-visibility crosswalks in multiple locations. Uh, secondly, as mentioned earlier, the vehicular entrances for the residential components of the site and the school components of the site will be separated, again, to help um separate some of that school drop-off pickup traffic from the existing residential neighborhood on 16th Street. Um, again, I'll reiterate that the project complies with all objective standards related to traffic management, meaning that the denial of the project on these grounds would go against the requirements of SB 330. Um, representatives from Kittleson are available to answer any questions that the council may have on this topic. Fourth, the appellant raised a concern about the amount of parking provided on-site and the potential impact to the on-street parking in the surrounding neighborhood. As stated earlier, the project fully complies with all objective parking standards per SB 330. And this includes meeting the municipal code's parking requirement for the school portion of the site and greatly exceeding the amount of parking that the city can require for the residential portion of the site. and greatly exceeding the amount of parking that the city can require for the residential portion of the site due to the density bonus nature of the project. Additionally, I'll mention there is some potential for shared parking between the residential and the school site. So in the evenings and on the weekends, there can be some spillover parking for residential use while the school is not in session. Fifth, one of the appellants was unable to provide comment during the public comment period of the Planning Commission hearing due to technological issues with Zoom. Staff obviously deeply regrets that the public experienced any difficulty using the Zoom app during the Planning Commission meeting. And we hope that this shift to a hybrid meeting, even though we're running to a few options or little issues tonight, is making anyone who experiences technological barriers to have a different option to come in person. Fortunately, in the case of the appellant who was not able to provide public comment during the Planning Commission hearing, that same person had provided comments to staff ahead of time, so those comments were reflected in both staff's presentation and the staff report for that item. And then finally, the appellate group expressed concern that the proposed development may impact the ability of Tennyson Road to serve as an evacuation route during an emergency. The fire department has reviewed the proposed project, and it determines that it meets all fire code requirements in terms of egress. Both the proposed project and the reserve community at the hill have two means of egress, so neither of them would actually have to rely solely on Tennyson in an emergency. And additionally, the local transportation analysis found that the project would result in no traffic operational deficiencies on Tennyson. So again, all the objective standards have been met on this topic, meaning that denial of the project on these grounds would go against the requirements of SB three thirty. And the fire chief is available if anyone has any specific questions on the evacuation routes. So in addition to staff's analysis on the specific grounds of appeal, staff has determined that not only is the project consistent with the council's approved conceptual plan for parcel group three, but it also complies with all of the objective standards per SB three thirty. So in summary, the project site is located within a half-mile of the South Hayward-Bart station with two different routes to access the station by foot or bike. There's new trail connections that will ensure that residents and schoolchildren have direct access to the new regional park that will be right at their doorstep. The clustered style of development preserves open space views for a number of the existing residents along Sixteenth Street. And then perhaps just most importantly, the project provides critically needed affordable housing to the city as well as a high-quality school, which offers a range of supportive wraparound services. So tonight, the city council is being asked to consider and make a decision on the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the project's entitlement application. If the appeal is denied and the Planning Commission's approval is upheld, the project would be immediately entitled. Now, the sale of parcel group three would then be subject to a disposition and developer agreement that is tentatively scheduled to be brought before this body next month. And then if the DVA is approved, then the applicant would be eligible to complete the building permit and grading permit process. So with that, it's staff's recommendation that the city council deny the appeal and adopt the resolution approving the site plan review, administrative use permit, and density bonus application. If the council has any questions, as has been mentioned, staff, the applicant team, various project consultants are all available. But in addition, if the mayor will allow, both the appellate group and the applicant have been told that they'll have a brief five-minute opportunity to address the council directly before council questions. Thank you. And for our city clerk, I believe the appellants that will be providing comment are providing comments online, and they will be participating via Zoom, and their names are Santaya, Mutreya, and Kusal.
Okay. And now I understand we are going to go ahead and hear a five-minute statement presentation from the appellant. And I believe that you are getting them on board on and they are going to be presenting remotely from.
That's correct.
Could you say again who they are?
Sanja Mutreya. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. And Kusal.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding is that they both have their hands raised.
I I see Kusal, so are we able to get?
Hey, this is Kusal. Are you able to hear?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm getting a lot of feedback, so I don't know, it's a technical issue or?
I'm sorry, are you presenting for the appellant?
Yes.
Okay, you have five minutes for the entire appellate presentation. Are you ready to begin?
Yes, sure.
All right, so go ahead and are you sharing this with someone else?
Yes, Sandra will be speaking a little bit.
All right, but the entire presentation is five minutes, so Madam City Clerk, will you go ahead and use the timer? And when she does that, then we can go ahead.
Mayor, just a point of clarification, do we set the timer for five minutes now?
Yes.
We'll go ahead and set that. Thank you.
All right, are we ready to go? Okay, go ahead and begin.
Hey, thank you very much, the mayor and council members. And thank you for this opportunity to share our neighborhood's concern regarding this development. Most of our concerns has been brought up earlier too. But the first and foremost, our concern is the project's close proximity, which is around fifty feet to the fault line. We know that from the geotechnical exploration documented June one, two thousand and twenty-one, it does state that from the geotechnical engineering standpoint, they have recommended to go ahead with the project. Of course, it has to incorporate all the designs, plans, and the specification. But it also says that the primary geotechnical concern that could affect the development on the site are slopes, stability of the eastern slope, potential creep resulting from encroachment of traces of the Hayward Fault into the project limits. And of course, existing landslides, expensive soil, rock, excavability, and existing swell. So given the engineers' concern, we are really concerned that is it really safe to build a two-, five-story affordable housing structure and a charter school on this particular plot of land? And mind you that this is not a private liability somebody is taking, this is the public money that is being used for this project. Anything happens, of course, there is a liability on the city. But along with it, we are wasting the public money on a project which we know that is not safe. And our concern is that has city also look at other areas to build this high-density structure? Did city look at other locations in Hayward? And if so, where? And do you have any comparison why this was chosen versus the other? And if the city did not look at other locations, then why not, of course? And why not consider a large vacant lot maybe on the corner of Fiddle or Grove? And what about locations on Hisperry and Bollywood? Besides this project being fifty feet from the fault line and placing, which will place these tenants at risk, our other concern is regarding the parking spaces, which was brought up in the presentation. So this project only calls for one eighty-three parking spaces for one seventy-six units consisting of, I think there are studios, one, and one, two, and three bedroom units. We understand that state mandates, the density bonus law states that project located within a half-mile from a transit system only needs to provide point-five spaces of parking unit. But is it really reasonable for one seventy-six units to have one eighty-three spaces? And it's really unreasonable to think that household will only have one vehicle, especially if there are multiple drivers per household. And in California, we do see that, that it's not a very transit-friendly state, right? And if you only provide one eighty-three parking spaces, where are the other tenants going to park their cars? And these cars will spill over to our crowded neighborhoods, which are already crowded, the crowded neighborhood streets. And most of the homes in these neighborhoods are older homes with no garages, or only a small number of homes have single or double-car garages. So this is a concern, and one of the points that was brought up was that the parking will be shared with the school. And I'm not very sure, I don't have small kids now, but I'll be really concerned if the school is actually sharing the parking with with the development, because this is a security risk for our kids. And I don't really know any school that is doing that, and that is of course due to security concerns. Even if it's the weekend, there are things happening in the school, the games and all this stuff, which happen over the weekend, right? And just, and one more thing that we want to bring up is just because cities building these near Bart does not require a guarantee that residents will use this public transit. And if those people are working within Hayward itself, Bart is of probably more or less no use to them. They still have to travel, right?
Your time, I'll have to ask you to wrap up right now.
Okay, and so you're getting our concern and I think these are our major concerns, and of course, the traffic, which will be too high on the Sixteenth and Tennyson. And I'll let Sandra speak if we still have the time. Thank you very much. Thanks for letting us present our case.
All right, thank you. And now we're going to have a statement presentation by the applicant, and we have also allocated five minutes for them. Get ready to start that. I think we have two, two, I think there are two project sponsors here, so I think if you want to just go ahead and introduce, and I guess you're ready to do the five minutes. And all right, so if you'll each introduce yourself when, you know, when you come up and go ahead.
And Mayor, sorry to interrupt, there is also a presentation that the applicant has sent me ahead of time, so if we can pull up the applicant screen, I will advance slides.
Oh, okay, you're going to have, okay, so when, are they ready for that? Okay, I'm not seeing it on the screen here, but. Okay, there it is, all right. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Hello. The clock going?
Okay.
Hello, my name is Kate Blessing-Cowmore, and I'm a senior project developer with Eden Housing. I'm thrilled to be presenting on the parcel group three project of joint venture between Eden Housing, the Pacific, and the Pacific Companies in partnership with the primary school. Next slide, please. Our joint venture partner, the Pacific Companies, was the largest producer of affordable housing in the country in two thousand and eighteen, and they have over two decades of experience developing in the Bay Area and the state and bringing unique experience with developing school facilities. Next slide, please. Eden got our start in Hayward in nineteen sixty-eight with a group of volunteers who held their meetings at the local IHOP on Foothill. We not only develop affordable housing, we are in it for the long game. We have in-house property management and resident services providers. And now our portfolio of properties includes more than eleven thousand homes for twenty-five thousand residents. While our reach has grown beyond Hayward, we are still immensely proud of our Hayward roots and continue to operate dozens of affordable properties here. We don't just manage properties in Hayward, we work here too. Our headquarters are on Grand Street, right across from the Hayward-Bart station. Our first large-scale development was Josephine Lum Lodge, a senior property with one hundred and fifty units of affordable housing, which was completed in nineteen seventy-two. Today, Eden has developed or managed thirty properties in Hayward, including Altamira Family and Senior Apartments, just a few blocks away from the parcel group three project. And here is a site map that you saw before showing both Hayward Parcel Group Three and Altamira. Next slide, please. We've laid down roots in Hayward, and we're here to stay. In addition to developing and managing our properties, we help residents create pathways out of poverty by promoting housing stability and programming that helps residents reach their goals on a path to personal and economic empowerment. Even though we operate a number of properties in Hayward, there is still unmet need for affordable housing here. In order to afford the fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Hayward without being considered rent-burned, a household must earn over ninety thousand dollars a year, which translates to a housing wage of forty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Next slide, please. So what do we mean when we say that our development will be affordable? It means that a police cadet, or department clerk, or a nursing assistant, or someone who works downtown at a retail establishment will be able to afford a home here. Now I'm going to hand it off to Courtney Garcia, the CEO of the primary school.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Courtney Garcia with the primary school. On behalf of our Hayward-based families, team, and partners, I want to share our enthusiasm for this project and all that it can bring by way of benefits to children and families in Hayward. Next slide, at the primary school, we believe that raising a child is a team effort. By bringing together all the caring adults in a child's life, starting at an early age, we have seen that every child can learn, be well, and thrive. Next slide, first, we start early. We know that kindergarten readiness is an area of great need. That's why we work with children before preschool begins and then provide full-day preschool. Next, we partner deeply with parents. Sorry, back on the previous slide. We believe that when a parent is well, a child can truly thrive. We provide parent wellness coaching and we support parents to access services. Lastly, we collaborate directly with clinicians, both at Kaiser Sleepy Hollow and through Tiborsio-Vasquez and other medical homes. Next slide, over the past three years, we have listened to parents, to community members, to understand how this program could build on strengths and fill gaps in the community. Next slide, three weeks ago, we officially opened our preschool in rented space. Deep relationships in this community have helped us to reach out to a diverse and powerful community of Hayward families. Ninety-four percent of children enrolled are Hayward students. Ninety-four percent of families qualify for California State Preschool based on income, and right now there are ten different languages spoken by families, including Spanish, English, Farsi, Arabic, Cantonese, Mandarin, Tagalog, Vietnamese, Tagrigna, and Tongan. We are building a truly partnership-driven program. I'll share a couple of examples. Our partnership with Kaiser Permanente allows us to do early developmental screening and collaborate directly to address a child's needs. Partnering with Tiborsio-Vasquez will provide critical onsite dental services for children. And over the past two years, the primary path we've been exploring is an innovative district partnership school with Hayward Unified. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this project. No matter what the school structure is, this program will continue to reflect active and ongoing input from families, partners, and community members.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for the presentations. Now we're going to go to council for questions. And I'm going to first ask my colleagues up here, one of them just disappeared, but do either of you have any, oh, there he is. Councilmember Zermania or councilmember Lim, yes, you have questions? Go ahead, councilmember Zermania.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I just have two minor questions. One of them, we seem to always keep hearing about folks not knowing about these projects, and that's one of the reasons today for this, for this project. So are we doing, can we think of something that to make sure that folks really to, for us to make sure that they are listening or that they have received it, maybe of the three hundred folks who live in the area, maybe spend a couple of hours calling ten of them at random. Did you hear this? Did you receive it? And if they did not, well, then we need to do something, but I'm hoping that we can come up. And if they did not, well, then we need to do something. But I, I'm hoping that we can come up with something to try to do away with that. And then my other question is, um, are we, are we planning to do anything with the lack of lighting on Sixteenth Street? What is it?
Uh, yes, uh, just to quickly address the first item. Yes, this is an ongoing conversation with planning staff and others in the city. We're constantly trying to think of other outreach areas. Unfortunately, it's true. I mean, I do with my own mail. Sometimes people get a postcard mailer and they, you know, disregard it or are not paying attention to it until we get to a public hearing. Um, with this project, since it is one of the parcel group projects, we also luckily had channels and emails to send out some information via interested groups that way, but clearly we missed some people. So that, that is an ongoing thing that we're working at and improving as a city. And then regarding the lighting on Sixteenth Street, yes, there are conditions of approval included as part of the project that will address that and improve lighting conditions on that street.
Um, that's excellent. That's, and I'm glad that they bring it up. And whenever you're ready, Mayor, I'm ready for a motion.
Uh, well, we're not ready for that yet. We have questions and councilmember Lambden.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes. So I had a question about, um, so thank you, everybody, for your work on this. And um, I did meet with the applicants and traded some emails with the appellants. And uh, so this is a proposed as an all-electric project, including the school. And I just wondered briefly if maybe it's the fire chief, maybe it's our city stat, uh, you know, this side of the dais or that side of the dais, uh, to give a little bit of, is there anything we need to be concerned about if this area blacks out? Um, in terms, especially because there's a school there, um, if they were to lose power. I know there's solar, but that doesn't go directly to the buildings. So can you help me think about that a little bit?
Yeah, I was, I'm defer to the fire chief. Do you have some thoughts on that in terms of an all-electric project? It is, it is something, we're moving a lot of our development towards all-electric. Do you have anything to add, Chief Contreras?
Yeah, I think I, geez, I think I understood the question. I have a hard time hearing over here. It, the question is, is there a concern about power outages because it's an all-electric project?
Correct. Um, the safety of, uh, both the students and the residents, if we should have, you know, extended power outage.
Got it. So the, the life safety uh, features on the building that have been approved will allow for egress of the building. Uh, i- as far as surrounding areas and the power, of course, anytime the power is out, that presents some challenges uh, for people to move out and about. Uh, but I don't think any more so than any other neighborhood or any other apartment dwelling.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was trying to determine. Appreciate that. Um, and then lastly, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, councilmember Salinas?
Uh, yes, before I uh, ask my question, I also wanted to make a disclosure. I noticed um, on the last slide, there was the logo of the Hayward Promise Neighborhood. And um, for those who don't know, I work for the Hayward Promise Neighborhood. And so I want to be clear that uh, I do not benefit uh, in any way uh, from the primary school. Um, the Hayward Promise Neighborhood does not uh, give the Hayward, the Hayward Primary School uh, money uh, and vice versa. Uh, we do not, uh, the Hayward Promise Neighborhood does not benefit from any proceeds from uh, the primary school. So I just wanted to uh, say that and uh, so that there was any confusion. Um, I did have one question regarding the earthquake matter, uh, proximity to uh, the fault line. And, you know, uh, I know it's nearly impossible to build anything in Hayward in the Hayward Hills and not um, be confronted with proximity issues to the fault line. And I, I guess the, the question I have is, um, in prior developments, um, what kinds of mitigations have been made? And um, are there similarities to this project? Or are there parallels that we have um, done in other projects close to the fault line in this project?
So I'm going to ask if James Yang from NGO could come up and talk. He is the geotech engineer on this project, and he can talk about other projects and very familiar with building in California in and around fault lines.
Uh, yeah, so uh, my name is James Yang. I'm a senior in uh, geotechnical engineering with NGO. Um, and so we perform the fault exploration or fault evaluation and also the geotechnical exploration. So uh, you are correct, um, that California in general is a seismically active area. And I think one of the questions that you had was, uh, what are some, is this project, I guess, uh, unique in terms of mitigation measures, right?
Put another way, yes.
Yes. Um, and, and I would say that uh, from the perspective, uh, from a geotechnical perspective, uh, no. So part of the mitigation that, that goes into making a project like this work is there's going to be a significant level of what we call corrective grading. Um, and that corrective grading, I, I think Elizabeth mentioned before that there are some keyways that are going to be built. And one way that you can look at keyways is that if you have a slope, and I apologize for anyone who can't see me, but if you have a slope at the bottom of the slope, you, you reinforce it. And so we do state in our report that seismic slope stability is a potential hazard, but we provide recommendations for addressing that hazard. So uh, I, I would say that what we've recommended is pretty typical. Uh, like you say, uh, developments that are near fault lines are not unique, especially in this development scene, so.
Okay, and then second question I have, and, and if you can stand there, stay there.
Yeah, sure.
Be appreciative. Um, I do know that um, uh, school construction or to construct schools, um, architectural design or the engineering of school buildings um, are different uh, to other public buildings. I don't know, uh, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And um, uh, and so I guess the, my question here is, uh, what kinds of art engineering, I guess, uh, uh, characteristics are in the school part um, that ensure safety or ensure stability and durability of the building? If I asked that correctly.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think I can navigate that. Um, so uh, when we work on school projects, uh, our, our reports end up going to the Division of State Architect. And when it goes to the Division of State Architect, it then gets reviewed by the California Geological Survey. They reference what we refer to in the industry as Note Forty-Eight. And Note Forty-Eight has a checklist of items that will be reviewed um, for, for compliance. So uh, it's, it's very thorough, I would say. I would say that a lot of uh, consultants sometimes have trouble getting through Note Forty-Eight without any comments. Um, and uh, we as a company are pretty familiar with Note Forty-Eight and pride ourselves on getting through that. So I would say that there's a, beyond the, the city of Hayward's review process, there would also be uh, for a school project, an additional level of review.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your presentation. Um, my question is, the geo, um, the geotechnical analysis, that is a requirement of this project, correct? That was included in the planning commission's review? That's not something that was initiated because of the appeal, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and uh, let's say someone wanted to, I guess, let me form my question in this way. Um, what is the threshold? Why was that analysis required? What are the parameters that made that an additional layer of oversight?
That's a great question. Um, senior engineer for the city, Scott Wickstrom, is actually on Zoom. Miriam, this is going to be the first time we test this, but if we could bring him up to answer that question, I think he would be the, the best suited person.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Scott Wickstrom, uh, senior civil engineer for City of Hayward. And, and in response to your question, councilmember Marquez, um, essentially our grading ordinance kind of dictates when we should be involved and include uh, geotechnical analysis. And typically, anytime we're on a hillside, um, it, it, there's a requirement for a geotechnical exploration, uh, exploration. Certainly, the Public Works Director has the ability to use some discretion and waive that where it's warranted for a smaller-sized project. But any decent-sized project, whether it be a subdivision or a large commercial development, or even a, even in a lot of cases, a large, single-family residence, uh, we require a geotechnical investigation. Um, I'll add further that there is something known as the Alquis Priolo Fault Zone, the special study zone. And anything that's within a quarter mile of a known trace of the Hayward Fault has additional requirements on top of that to, 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 to do that fault rupture or to do the fault study to identify locations where faults may be present on the project site.
Okay, so just to have like a visual understanding of this, would the reserve project um, at the end of Tennyson Road that was subject to the same type of analysis?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and the reserve project is part of the geological abatement mitigation? I'm trying to remember. Geological Hazard Abatement District, our GAD, um, that is an entity that the reserve is part of. Will this project also be required to enlist in the GAD?
Yes, uh, what, one of the conditions of approval for this project is that they participate in, in a GAD. Um, whether they join the existing Hayward GAD or choose elect to form their own GAD is, is to be determined, but this project will definitely be uh, a part of a GAD.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is for our fire chief, Chief Contreras, please. Um, my question is, um, with this type of plan, what is the level of involvement with specifically your department and the police department? Just looking at safety, uh, egress, just access points. Can you just kind of summarize what your role would be in this project?
Yeah, generally, councilmember, with any project, access and egress are the primary concerns of the fire department, is uh, along with water supply. Uh, this project initially had, um, some, because it is a unique-shaped lot, had some challenges that the developer uh, met by doing what we refer to as an alternative methods or means uh, to reach the access uh, around the buildings that we desire. Uh, so they, they are meeting the California Fire Code uh, and have enhanced the life safety measures uh, above the state fire code uh, in response to some of our uh, requests for increased sprinkler heads, uh, an additional uh, egress and uh, movement of one of the place structures uh, so that we have better access and an improved road in and around uh, the facility. Uh, we worked with them also on the turnabout and the location, um, so that we have adequate turnarounds and hammerheads uh, so that we can access all three buildings. Uh, we look at them as, as kind of a uh, a single uh, complex, even though there's the school is separate from uh, the two dwelling units. As far as uh, police access to egress, I can't speak to that. Uh, but I, generally speaking, um, those reviews are accommodated in the, the fire review.
Okay, thank you. And um, in your professional opinion and experience um, with all your years with the city, do you feel that the applicant was amenable or are there any concerns at this time that have not been addressed?
They're very amenable, very pleasant to work with, and uh, I think I understood the concerns that we brought to the table and uh, remedied those and worked together for some mitigating factors uh, so the project could move forward.
Okay, thank you so much. And then my next question, I think um, staff can um, address this. In terms of the affordable housing complex, is this designed for families, seniors? Is there a targeted population?
Um, I'll actually invite the applicant to speak to this directly, but yes, it's an a hundred percent affordable project. There are units of different sizes meant to target different households, but I'll defer to Kate.
You're correct. Uh, councilmember Marquez, it is a, a property for families.
And do we know how many units are going to be the three-bedroom?
Yes, uh, we are going to have, I believe it's forty-seven three-bedroom apartments.
And so for a unit that large, are they giving parking permits? Like, how is that managed?
So parking generally at our, at our properties is handled on a first-come, first-served basis. Uh, so that would be um, one uh, parking, parking stall per unit. Uh, but that would be something we would work out with management ahead of lease-up.
I'll also add, sorry, councilmember Marquez, um, that there is a transportation demand management plan that can address some of these things and look at ways to reduce parking demand overall. And that's something that we will, um, that we are requiring through a condition of approval in the building permit phase.
Thank you. And will there be a manager on site?
Yes, we'll have two uh, staff living on site, uh, so two night managers who make nightly walks uh, as part of their job description.
And if anyone in the community had a concern, who would they talk to?
Uh, they could call up the night manager, property manager. They also know where Eden's offices are on Grand Street. So we're very accessible and we strive to be a good neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions, and I, I apologize. I didn't want to disclose. I also met with um, the applicant from Eden Housing, as well as representatives from the primary school via Zoom. Um, just wanted to disclose that. I apologize. I should have done that initially. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Wahab.
Thank you. Uh, just some quick questions. Um, one, I do want to say that I did read all the emails that were coming in regarding the um, concerns about the property. I also met with uh, Eden Housing and the primary school CEO. Um, with that said, uh, I do want to ask the proximity to the fault line. Um, do we believe that based on the report and the study that was done, that we have relatively feel comfortable with moving forward on this particular project?
Um, the short answer to that is yes, but I'll turn it back over to Scott Wickstrom for the long answer.
Yes, again, Scott Wickstrom, senior civil engineer. Um, there were a total of seven different fault um, line trenches that were dug across the site. That is pretty, uh, pretty thorough to characterize the limits and the extents of the fault on the site. Um, I will add on, this is kind of to uh, councilmember Salinas's question um, about similar projects. Um, we do have a number of projects that are obviously constructed nearby faults. And it is fairly common that a fifty-foot setback from a defined fault trace is what is used as mitigation to protect those, those developments, those properties. So we are, one, we have well-characterized the site, and two, the mitigations, the setback from the known fault trace is consistent with what is done, has been done elsewhere in the city and also consistent with what is recommended through California uh, Geological Survey.
Okay. And then um, if the concerns that we hear about the fault line, um, technically the properties there, all of the properties, um, would be in, in, let's say, in an area that is concerned, correct? Even the, the homes that have been there for decades.
You're, you're correct. And there's really, when you think about the fault and the proximity of the fault, there's two primary considerations. Number one is like a surface rupture of the fault. If, while the fault propagates from below grade all the way up to surface and the, and the ground moves, shearing at the surface. Now that's where we definitely want to hold the setback from that to protect the, the structure itself. The second primary concern is really the strong ground shaking, right? And, and, and frankly speaking, um, most faults in California rupture at a depth of four to six miles below the ground surface, so that energy is focused at depth. And it really doesn't matter if you're fifty feet away from the, the surface of the fault or you're five hundred feet away from the surface of the fault, you will see strong ground motions. And this is where, you know, through the geotechnical analysis, through the building code, through the structural analysis, that um, the strong, strong ground motions can be accommodated, particularly with our newer building codes and our, our, our improved knowledge of, of construction and how to, how to mitigate for those motions.
Okay, so, so I want to be clear, this new structure, as well as structures that have been built in the last, say, last fifty years that are even, you know, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, roughly even a mile away, are all, you know, potentially dealing with the same thing?
They're, they will all be dealing with the same amount of ground shaking. Um, they will be, the, the ones that are five hundred feet away are much safer when it comes to that surface projection of the fault. Um, but the standard of practice, the standard of care, um, has been, if we can identify and clearly has been, if we can identify and clearly delineate the limits of a fault, the standard mitigation is to do a 50-foot setback to mitigate for that surface rupture component. But yes, you are absolutely correct. All buildings within a, say, 500-foot span on both sides of the fault are going to see almost identical ground motion, ground shaking.
Okay, and a building built today with all the tech, you know, capabilities and the science behind, you know, a construction and development of today's time has greatly improved from 50 years ago, correct?
Dramatically so, dramatically so.
Okay. So, because I want to hit some of the main concerns that are included. Public outreach, I will say that, you know, I often think that we should just post on social media as well. I know we did talk about this particular project for some time, but, you know, just as much as we can, social media, the emails, as well as much more.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're in the question period. We haven't had the public hearing yet, so.
I just want to ask specifically, have we actually done anything on social media to promote, you know, any discussion on this project?
We have, over the course of the Parcel Group Three project, and again, this started years ago with this conceptual plan. Over the course of that, there is an effort through our city communications to put out things in our website, on our Facebook feeds. For this project during kind of some of these big items, that has occurred through those same kind of parcel group feeds. But to your point, it's something that staff is looking at and we're constantly thinking of ways to improve.
Okay. And then for traffic congestion, as well as parking, I actually do completely understand, you know, I was also told the primary school's parking lot would be available to potential residents. I do find it concerning that it's a first come, first served basis to a lot of the residents, you know, red flags about parking. Is there specifically a way that parking could potentially be increased?
Based on the size of the site, no, not feasibly. Again, the development, the developable area of the site is incredibly small. We worked with the applicant extensively, they worked with staff. Even though they were only required to provide 88 parking spaces for the residents, they heard the concerns, they wanted to provide as many as possible, and 183 is kind of the maxed out number based on the site constraints.
Okay, however, what is the acreage of the project site as a whole?
The acreage of the developable part is about seven acres.
So in seven acres, they cannot develop just, let's say, another 10,000 square feet of just flat land that they can, you know, talk about parking or something like that?
Yeah, so we had another item that will be coming before the council this evening is La Vista Park. There was a lot of negotiation between the city and the La Vista Park team and the Parcel Group Three project and figuring out exactly where the project boundary should be. And for various reasons, it was decided that this alignment is best. You know, the parking lot as it is now already extends pretty far to the north along 16th Street. A lot of people were concerned that, you know, if there's somebody unloading groceries or like a mom with a stroller or something like that, we don't want to extend it too far out because it just makes it infeasible or unlikely to give a lot of benefit of a close parking space for units. So again, you know, this is an imperfect site, it has a lot of site constraints. This was kind of after many iterations, the best site plan that staff and the applicant could come up with.
Okay. And then as far as technology issues, could you elaborate a little bit more?
So from my understanding from the appellant's concerns that are, again, provided to councils, you can read them directly yourself. One of the appellants was participating in the Zoom meeting. She thought she had her hand raised in the app, it didn't appear that she had her hand, like the little hand icon had that come up. So she was not called on during the public comment period. So there's some, you know, either function on our end, function on her end, I'm not sure. She was not able to speak during the public comment period, even though she had a desire to do so. As I mentioned, that same applicant, or that same appellant had provided comments previously to the city. So at least some of her concerns were presented in the staff presentation and staff report. But that's the main problem, as I understand it.
Okay, and I do remember reading that. As far as lighting and some of these other things, is there potential to have the developer include more lighting?
Yes, and that has been included as conditions of approval directly in response to these neighborhood concerns.
Okay, and then as far as, I think it was councilmember Selena who asked a question where it was answered that there was significant recommendations made. Now, you know, I always talk about how recommendations are just that, a recommendation. Is there movement to actually initiate some of these recommendations?
And councilmember Wahab, are you referring to the recommendations in terms of the geotech analysis or the transportation, the parking? The answer is yes to all of them, but I want to make sure I respond.
Yes, to all of them, but specifically about the geotech and definitely the transportation fees.
Yes, so as part of the conditions of approval for the project and through the grading permit process, because there's a whole second process that goes on for the grading of this project, yes, all of those what are in the technical reports are included as recommendations. That's really just language that comes from our consultants. We, as the city, require those things to be done to ensure these projects are safe and that we're, you know, mitigating any concerns or risk or anything that may be present at the site due to its proximity to a fault line, for example.
Okay, and then as far as the Hayward School Board and teachers, what has been their feedback about this particular project?
I actually have not, as the project planner, have not received direct feedback from the school board, but the school team is still in negotiation with the school board. I don't know if, Courtney, if you want to speak a little bit to where we are right now?
Yes, so I'll share that, I briefly shared during my somewhat breathless two minutes speaking before, that over the last two years, our primary focus has been really exploring an innovative district partnership school with Hayward Unified. We're really inspired by the vision around community schools that Hayward Unified has set forth and has been building towards. Our plan was to conclude that planning process in May. Given school reopenings and everything going on last spring, we agreed to extend the process through this fall. We're really grateful to the more than 25 staff and parents who have participated in multiple design retreats and planning sessions around that potential partnership. The model will require some flexibility, but we feel really hopeful and really optimistic about where we are in the planning process. And I do want to say, just for specifically, we are committed to teachers and school staff being compensated fairly, given the importance of their role. All aspects of pay and working conditions, if we arrive at a partnership with Hayward Unified, would be explicitly agreed upon by labor partners.
Okay, and that is specifically one of the questions I did have. And then I had one more question, but it slipped my mind, so I will ask it most likely probably in the comments section. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm going to, once again, ask everybody to, I think especially who's here in this chambers, to speak really directly into the microphone. I was allowed, I mean, I was asked to do that. I know I'm missing a lot of what people are saying, unfortunately. So, but I think if we all try, we will get there.
It does sound muffled to a degree. So sometimes when in your presentation, it came out really clear, and then the rest of the time was, yeah, so most are.
I think really trying to speak right into the microphone is very important. So I do have one question, though, that really I don't think has been touched on unless it was something I wasn't able to hear. That has to do with, you know, a lot of the density bonus and, you know, reasons to support this housing is the fact that the site is within a half mile of a major transit stop, the South Hayward Bart Station. And however, distance is not always the only factor when considering whether you want to walk somewhere. And for me, I know I live very close to Mission Boulevard, and yet, and I do walk up and down between my house, but walking up, walking back up can be, you know, a lot more, take a lot more energy than sometimes I have. So, and this site has those challenges as well. And I know that I heard something about steps. And so I just would, if either you or the applicant could go over a little more again, about exactly what steps are being taken to make that walk more feasible up into both, well, both to the school and to the, you know, the housing. I think once you're up there, you're probably on a more flat terrain, but you have to get a little ways up Tennyson to actually do that. So if you could talk about that a little?
Yes, and I apologize for anyone if it was unclear to hear me before, I'll try to stay really close. Please just give me a signal if you cannot understand me rather than letting me go on. But yes, the topography of the site is admittedly very challenging. So the most direct route from Bart to the site is via Tennyson. Of course, as anyone who's driven up Tennyson knows, there is a slope there on Tennyson Road itself. And additionally to that, there's an elevation change between Tennyson and the site itself. So for those people that do want to take the most direct route, you know, want to use this as part of their exercise getting to and from Bart, there is a path to do that. They can use the bike lanes that are existing and proposed, some are going to be improved along Tennyson, to take that directly to Bart or to walk on the sidewalks to Bart. There are two options at that point. The other option would be to walk a little bit further, a bike a little bit further, and use the curved driveway access. Now, admittedly, speaking for myself, I am not the most advanced cyclist, that might be a little much for me. So for people that are kind of in my boat, or maybe they're pushing a stroller, or that just don't want to do an intense workout on their way to work or way home from work, the other route that is identified is, again, has some slope to it, but it's much more gradual. So this would be from the northern portion of the site by the parking lot. You'd go down Hancock Street, which has a little bit of a slope, but it's not as dramatic as Tennyson. Go through Mission Boulevard, there are crosswalks and sidewalks, and then go down 12th Street to the Bart Station. That's a half mile in length, so again, it's a little bit longer, but it's not prohibitively long for most people.
Okay, and where were these steps located with? That was on the Tennyson side?
Yes, the steps are on the Tennyson side, and generally speaking, they lead from the side of the school down that kind of L-grade change to the street on Tennyson.
And that's actually below where the road is going to come in from. Yeah, okay, I've got that. Thank you, thank you. And I was able to understand you. So with that.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Sorry.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to ask if city manager, if there's any updates. My understanding is no one can hear us on channel 15 or YouTube or streaming. Do we have any updates on that issue being resolved?
Hold on, let me get an update from staff. I can't hear her from sitting up here.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor. Just wanted to see if there was a status update on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was really clear, Mayor. I don't know what you did, but it was very clear.
What?
You're being very clear right now.
Oh, good, okay.
Just, so we have updated on channel 15 and on YouTube, there's a little banner that the staff has put on there if people can to join the actual Zoom call, either by phone or the Zoom application. Again, because council members who are in the Zoom app and here in the chambers can hear everyone and hear public comments, we are able to proceed with the hearings this evening. The full recording will be posted after the meeting, but we would encourage everyone to join in via the Zoom app or to call the number, the phone number, if they don't have the Zoom application, call the phone number on the agenda to listen in.
All right, I hope everyone's heard that. You know, we're able to hear each other in the room and the council members on Zoom and the other people on Zoom can hear. And so I hope that the people who are at home will join us via Zoom. But we're going to proceed, and so now we are going to open the public hearing on this item. And I think we do have a number of speakers. So let's go ahead, and it looks like, and I'm going to call on the people who are actually here in the room first, and we'll start with Kiana Reese.
Good evening. My name is Kiana Reese, and I've been a resident of Hayward for all of my life. I live on Tennyson and Mission in the area that's directly affected by this project. While I do share my neighbors' concerns in regards to traffic in the area, I do feel that my minor inconvenience for projected traffic is far outweighed by the need for families to have affordable housing. Also, the city currently does not offer a full-day public preschool. The primary school brings that option for low-income families to our city. There are thousands of families who have to choose daily between being able to afford housing, food, and childcare for their toddlers. And this is a chance to end that struggle for many of us. I read over the appellant's petitions, and one reason listed on the petition stated that this project would bring lots of unwanted citizens to Hayward. I am pleading for the council to uphold the commission's approval, to show that all people are welcome, valued, and loved in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Perlinda Howell. Yes. Put the red light on there. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. You've got it, you've got it.
You can hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Perlinda Howell, and I'm a proud parent of the founding families of the primary school in Hayward. Since joining the program a little over a year ago, my husband and I have both been amazed by the school's holistic approach to education, their active parent support, and their convenient connection to community resources and activities. And recognizing that supporting a child's foundation in the home is an important aspect in the success of her learning, the primary school makes us feel valued and an active part of our child's education. I grew up in Hayward Public Schools K through 12, graduating in 2006. Locally earned my BA at UC Berkeley thereafter and served several social services positions in the community. So I'm proud that my child has current and potential opportunities to grow up in the community that I did. As my world expanded with my first child, this school program has been a blessing for my four-year-old daughter, myself, and my family. As a new parent, it has been a blessing to be connected with this program as a support and partnership in raising my child. I am here tonight to briefly share my experience of the school thus far in hopes that the school will continue for years to come, as I know it will make a great impact on the lives of our children. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you all, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. And then I think is Nancy Mongia here or speaking from outside? There's.
Mayor Halliday, I believe she was planning on joining, but I don't see her on Zoom. So if we have Nancy here.
Okay, so let's go to, I'm sorry, you just took her name off. Let's go to Julia Zhang, and then we'll come back to the Zoom speakers. Okay.
Yes, one moment.
So Julia Zhang, are you in the chambers here?
She is in the conference room. I will go ahead and wait for her to come in with the interpreter.
Okay.
One moment, please.
My main comment has already, um, delivered to all the council members. So I am not going to repeat those things here. Um, instead, I will ask for permission to, uh, play some, uh, we, we, um, recording recordings for the next six minutes. I would like to be permitted to do that.
Are they, are you, is he translating those?
Yes. Oh. The recording is in English.
Okay, then you only, you don't get six minutes to do that.
It's okay?
Yeah.
So I agree with the concept, but I don't agree with the execution. Um, first off, uh, the, what I've reviewed, the plans that I, I see here and sort of the discussion we've had about plans are changing. We have renderings that are inaccurate. In many communities, this, this wouldn't even be here with this kind of level of detail. So, um, I don't really understand how cyclists access a facility. I don't agree that this is walkable at all. I guess I'm, I'm sort of, I just don't really understand how the general plan identifies its use and its location. I mean, I understand objective standards. I think they need to get a better look at how these are being defined. I guess one thing that sort of really bothers me about this is when we talk about folks that might need to gain access to the bus. Those with physical challenges might have a really difficult time gaining access to buses on Mission Boulevard. And I, I know that paratransit is available, but paratransit is a taxpayer-funded service. So why are we developing a project in a location that's going to need to expand paratransit? I guess this is not the proper topography for this type of land use. The final part's going to be super hypocritical because I live in the hills, but I sort of think that the hills of Hayward never should have been developed. And I would like to point out, when you look up in the hills of Fremont, it's, it's beautiful. You look on the peninsula up into the hills, it's completely overbuilt. You know, trying to build a 66-foot-tall structure in this location, I think is, um, really a visual challenge. And I think it really degrades from, um, the beauty of Hayward. So I do not support this project as designed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ali Sullivan.
Thank you. Um, so a couple of thoughts here. First, in, um, I want to thank you, Ron, for the presentations this evening. Details much appreciated. In theory, I think this is a very good project. Obviously, I'm, well, maybe not obviously, but I am supportive of public housing. Uh, I'm supportive of the ability to include community services in the facility. I'm supportive of the school project. Uh, and I'm supportive, very supportive of development around public transit. In practice, though, I, I don't love this project for a couple of reasons. First off, I fundamentally don't think you should be building on top of or extremely adjacent to a fault line.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Yang, your time is up.
Pretty of a, what, five or six-story building with high, high density.
Yeah, I, I was watching it and you have now taken up three minutes, so thank you.
Almost unfathomable that you'd want to put a school with close to 400 students.
I'm sorry, yeah, that, yes, you can turn it off. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
As for six minutes, I got approved.
I'm sorry, the, the time is doubled when you're having it translated, but you were not doing that, so. The time is three minutes, but for, for people who need their translation, it's six minutes. So, so thank you for the comments.
Email from MB Service, I have five minutes. Okay, it's fine, I accept. Okay.
All right, and we have received your comments in writing too, and I know that we've all read them.
What they, what they said is exactly what I want to say. I'm not opposed to affordable house, but need to be in the safe.
Thank you.
Safe place, not, not.
You cannot, just because you are building affordable housing, you'll put it in, uh, unsafe, um, uh, geographically unsafe area.
I'm sorry, Ms. Yang, you need to sit down, please, now. Yes, your time is up. Thank you. Okay. Yes, you may give them to the city clerk and, and she will, yes. All right, so, um, we're going to move to the Zoom speakers now. I hope we are going to be able to hear them. So we have.
Mayor Halliday, sorry to interrupt. I believe we have two speakers in the audience who submitted cards and I think you have them.
Uh, I'm not seeing that on my list here. So will you then go ahead and announce them?
Yeah, Perlinda.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, they both, she spoke.
She spoke already.
Yes.
All right, my apologies.
All right, so we're going to go to the Zoom.
Madam City Clerk, I'm sorry, there were two speakers who put their names in under public comment. Are they, they, they're, they're here, they haven't spoken up yet.
Those were the ones.
They have spoken. No, they just, those women in the back of the room. They put their names in earlier.
Okay, I, I don't know, their, their names aren't on here.
The names that I have are the following. I'm displaying them right now. If you wish to speak and you were not called, would you please come forward?
Yeah, I think we called them under public comment and so I think it didn't reset.
Okay.
Yes, I believe the name that I have up there was the one that was submitted during public comment. But, um, my apologies if, um, if you haven't been called, please come forward.
Just, just come forward and state your name.
My name's Colleen Hutchins. I live on East 16th Street. I would like to point out that East 16th is not a standard street. It is a very narrow street. It is wide enough for one modern fire engine to go down. And you can't pass anything when the fire truck has the street. I would also like to point out that the Pine Crest and View, excuse me, the Pine View and the View Crest View apartment complex, their tenants have taken all the street parking on Hancock, Webster, and East 16th. And you are short about 100 parking spaces for this development. There's no place for them to park. Currently, the school's traffic from Monroe High School and St. Clement's comes up Hancock and zooms down East 16th to get to the school. Hancock, by the way, is a steep street. It is not as steep as tennis, East Tennyson, but is extremely steep and people aren't walking to Bart down that street. Uh, I've also noticed that every housing complex that you have put up recently in Hayward, all the street parking has disappeared. You're not adding enough parking to your complexes. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, just come on down and.
Um, hi, my name is Patricia Davis and I also live on East 16th Street. I'm neighboring to Colleen.
Can you maybe pull the mic down just a little bit more? Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Um, my name is Patricia Davis. I do live on East 16th Street, neighboring on Colleen. I have the same issues as she does. The concern about the congestion and the traffic on East 16th Street is really something that needs to be addressed and looked at. Um, I know, um, you have tried to explain it, which I didn't really understand all of it because I couldn't hear all of it, truthfully. But I've addressed the issues with Monroe High School and St. Clement's when school is in and it's just atrocious trying to get, get out of my driveway. So that's my, my concern about the increased traffic and want you really to look at that. The other thing about the, um, the height of the buildings that are proposed, I think it's five stories, right? And like to look at that maybe versus three stories versus five stories. I don't know. I mean, I'm not a geologist, I'm not an engineer. But as far as it being on the fault line, I mean, my house is fairly close to the fault line. But at the time when we had it built, um, it was pure, I don't know what, there was piers going down underneath the dirt and all that, so. Is there anything else? I want to also, I was very impressed with the city council members discussing concerns that were raised by, um, our, um, our neighbors and really addressed them fully. I was very, I thought it was really well done and I appreciate it. And I also appreciate the fire department talking in our behalf as well because, you know, you look at these recent fires and you wonder. So anyway, thank you very much for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, now, unless there is someone else in, uh, Kiana Reese, she spoke, I believe, didn't she? Kiana Reese? Okay, so we're going to go now, we're going to go to the Zoom. And so I have RT. RT, are you wanting to speak on this item and?
Yes, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, uh, my name is Renee. Let me first start off with kudos to the city clerk for handling all of this, uh, hybrid, uh, city council meeting. I'm a former resident of Hayward, California, and I was raised in Hayward from 92 until 2005, until I left for college. Although I no longer live in Hayward, I did spend my formative years in, in the city. So I attended Eldridge, Glassbrook, Shaffer Park, Strawberry Elementary Schools. I attended King Middle School and I graduated from Tennyson High School. Right now, I live in the nation's capital in Washington DC and I am the first in my family to own a home. Um, I speak today to support the proposed development of the 176 affordable housing units in La Vista. Um, I submitted my public testimony, so I'll just go over some of, uh, to the city clerk for, uh, the public record. But I'll just go over some of my other pointed comments in response to some of the appellant and the opposition to the proposed development. Um, in response to the comments from Zhang at Al, those petitioners alleged that there was inadequate notice about the development. I live on the other side of the country and even I was able to find all of the information about the, uh, development. So I find it really, really difficult to believe that the petitioners were kept out of the loop. And as the public contact section of the staff report indicated in attachment one, they made it abundantly clear the adequate notification was made through every possible channel. Um, a little bit on the legislative analysis, um, or the citation, rather, where the petitioners aired. Uh, the petitioners air in their analysis of SB 1155 that they cite, uh, from the 2013, 2014 state legislative session. That bill never became law. It's disingenuous to put on their circulated petition with a catchy "Low Income People's Lives Matter" header. Uh, they conveniently omitted SB 330 for, uh, the Housing Crisis Act, which we already discussed. It's very clear that this, uh, project has had the, uh, support of, uh, the city. And there was even an attestation from an engineering firm with a geotechnical analysis. But the petitioners feigned indignation is comical at best. They, they live on the fault line, yet there is no mass exodus among them. So this, this isn't about geological concerns, it, or, or earthquakes or engineering integrity. It's about the current residents' disdain of poor Haywardians. And as affordable housing goes, it's, I'm led to believe that it's me and my family who they disdain. So in short, they're NIMBYs. I just wanted to really strongly urge the city council to support this La Vista project by summarily denying the appeals by these NIMBYs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Rosenberg. And after that's going to be Lacey Amade.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Karen Rosenberg and I'm a resilience fellow at Green Belt Alliance. For those who are unfamiliar with Green Belt Alliance, we are an environmental nonprofit that works to protect open spaces and encourages climate-friendly developments. We are proud to endorse the La Vista Residential Project and believe it is, it is exactly what Hayward needs to meet their environmental and equity goals. The seven-acre mixed development will have an array of sustainable features such as all-electric buildings, EV charging infrastructure, and permeable pavement. Its close proximity to high-quality transit and other services will aid in meeting the city's VMT reduction goals and is exactly what Hayward needs to grow smartly. Furthermore, construction of this development will result in a 50-acre park for community use and benefit. With the project being 100% affordable, it would provide Hayward's expanding population with access to much-needed affordable housing in the heart of the growing Mission Boulevard corridor. With more than 50% of renters in the city of Hayward being rent burdened, approving this project would directly benefit the citizens of Hayward. This project will encourage a walkable and economically vibrant community for Hayward residents across the income spectrum. By promoting climate-smart development, we can create thriving, resilient neighborhoods with ready access to transit and housing choices for all of the Bay Area's people. This kind of climate-smart development can help ensure we meet our housing goals, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and make sure that local residents are able to grow and thrive in their own communities. In closing, the development of the La Vista Residential Project is another step for the city of Hayward to ensure the creation of homes and vibrant communities near jobs, retail, and transit. We urge Hayward to think boldly about the climate resilience and the housing needs of our region and its people and approve this project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, Lacey Amade and to be followed by Me School Tutor.
Hello, good evening, everyone. This is Lacey Amade calling on behalf of the Hayward Collective. I am calling to express our support, our strong support for this project. I know in, in the past, um, we have been critical of other parcels that have been, you know, public land that has been sold that have only had 10% onsite affordable housing. But this example of 100% affordable housing, it shows a true community benefit for, and it shows a really good use for our public lands. Uh, I really hope that you will all do, um, you know, what you can to move this project forward. And I think an earlier commenter really put this very well, that this is about showing love and respect and showing that we value and welcome, you know, all of our residents, especially low-income residents, that they are welcome and that we want them here. Um, in looking at some of the appellant's petitions and statements, it seems that the real concern here is about an apprehension about having new neighbors. Um, and not all of the comments, but a couple of them did unfortunately go to the typical dog whistle that some NIMBYs go to by saying that they're concerned about there being low-income residents and that perhaps it could bring more crime. Um, it seems that all of us as a community have some work to do here to educate our other community members that, um, that we should be embracing affordable housing and that we should be showing empathy and be valuing that, um, forgiving, providing safe, affordable housing for all of our residents and making Hayward truly inclusive. So I really hope that, um, tonight and moving forward, you can, you will do what you can to approve this desperately needed affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, next, Me School Tutor, who'll be followed by Ginny Mattson.
Hi, um, thank you, um, for giving me this opportunity. Sorry, I didn't realize that my, um, official, kind of my account was showing up as on my business account. But this is Sunday. I want to start by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to start by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and on behalf of about 1,600 residents that are, you know, residing in, in reserve. In, also, also speaking on behalf of the future residents of Hideaway and then the neighboring neighborhoods. I want to clarify one thing, that this is not the, the appellant are not against affordable housing. We are an immigrant community ourselves. We know how hard it is to come in and settle down in United States. We've made a life for ourselves. We've struggled. We've gone through the same struggles. And we appreciate all of the affordable housing and, and benefits that this country has awarded us. So this isn't, absolutely not about affordable housing. We are fully supportive of it, but we just want to make sure the quality of life and the safety of people. Now, talking about, I want to address a couple of things about communication. I'm happy that that gentleman who just spoke was able to access the information. In going into the city council and speaking to an individual personally, we were told because we don't live in the 300 feet jurisdiction, we were not eligible to get those communications and those communications were not sent out. This was said to us in person. So I want to make that clear. The other thing is, I think we would be remiss if we don't look at this project holistically. All the comments that have been made here have been made in isolation of this project without taking into consideration the existing residents, the new projects that are coming up, both residential and commercial. Also, I want to talk about Tennyson being a single road. And then if you look at the logistics and the, you know, the transit, transportation congestion that will already, we already are looking at it with 1,600 residents already living up, coming up using that same one single road. As for access to BART, even today, it is absolutely hard to get parking in BART. I am waitlisted, my waitlist number on the BART parking is 600. I am no, no kind of hope to get any parking to go and use the BART. I'm not sure how adding any more further residents will ease that BART access. So I mean, there are, we have to look at it holistically. We have to look at it from a safety perspective. We also have to look at it from a perspective of, you know, in a calamity, you have one single road for Tennyson. How are you going to make sure people living in these communities are going to be taken care of and evacuated safely? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ginny Mattson, followed by Jim Clark.
So hi, my name's Ginny Mattson and I am here tonight because I heard a statement by the city geologic engineer in the July planning meeting that just caught my attention. It was such a glib statement about it didn't matter how close you were to the, to the fault for ground shaking. He did a much better job of explaining it tonight. I am only here now to say that in the NGO report, they go to great lengths, it appears, to do, give the trench logs for two trenches that were dug in 2019 that are in the north part of the property of the parcel. Underneath the, the parking lot, they do not give that same information, which shows the existence of shear zones and plastic clays, also known as fat clays, which cause, are problematic for and can cause foundation failure. They don't do that for the two trenches dug in 2016 underneath the school building and the housing. And I would like to know why. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Clark, followed by Blake Felsen. And I'll ask Steph if they want to, at the end of the public comment, perhaps comment on that question. If they, if they understood it. So, go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Jim Clark. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to comment on, I agree with the, with the appellant's arguments about the traffic and the parking situation. Hayward and California has been, by their own policy and plan, has been making traffic congestion worse on Mission Boulevard. They want to reduce the number of parking spaces so that people won't have any place to put their car. And so that's obviously a problem, but I'd like to bring up another issue that a lot of people haven't really spoken of yet, the electrification of all of this. There's been a policy and a plan for California and Hayward to remove natural gas as a, as a supply to each of these buildings. And unfortunately, what that does is it places a great deal more load on the grid. In an era where we have power safety shut offs and you, and city California will not grant any new power generation as well. So we have an aging grid that's being piled upon. We've got a ticking time bomb with a 2035 mandate for EVs. And, and so with all of this additional load on the grid, we're looking at a coming catastrophe and nobody seems to want to talk about it. So the, I know that they're putting solar power on there, but solar power does not solve the issue unless you have battery storage to go along with it. And, and so again, none of these things are being talked about. And, and I, I think that with the new development in the Hideaway and with the reserve and with this new here, new project here, we are looking at a definitely a problem coming up. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Blake Felsen, followed by Chai.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Blake Felsen. I'm with Felsen Companies. My company owns and manages 427 apartment units that are located across the street of East 16th from the project. It's Mission Heights Apartments, Crestwood Terrace Apartments and Pinecrest Apartments. Some of the in-person residents in the area had mentioned our, our, our properties earlier. So Hayward definitely needs more affordable housing. The primary school sounds very intriguing and beneficial to the community. I met with Eden Housing, the applicant, a couple of times about the project. We are in support of the project. We had a couple of concerns that were addressed a little earlier on, a couple of months ago, when we, when we brought them up. One of them was the lighting concern on East 16th. The only major concern we have that's left is, is the parking issue. As was mentioned earlier, East 16th is heavily parked pretty much all day, every day. And it's, it's a problem. We do a great job at our properties trying to police our, our parking issues. But a lot of people in the neighborhood want to park on East 16th and Webster and on Hancock. And it's a problem. And so one thing I was wondering if the applicant can consider adding parking stackers or adding a parking garage or giving something to kind of layer their parking if they can't add any parking on the open space or anywhere else. I'm not sure where the parking is going to be for La Vista Park. I was trying to look during the meeting where that was going to be located. I couldn't find the parking, the parking area for that. But I mean, people are probably going to be accessing the park through East 16th and some of the other inroads off that street. And so that's another question I have is where that parking lot is going to be. If, if, if the applicant can add some parking to their site, that would be great. Forty-seven three-bedroom apartments is going to add a lot of parking needs. And when they only have 183 dedicated spaces plus the 50. But even with all those spaces, that's 1.32 spaces per unit, which is pretty low. That's, that's all my comments. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. And if you want to hang on after this item, item number 12 is regarding La Vista Park. And as, I, as far as I can remember, the parking is pretty much further up the hill, right?
Correct. Generally speaking, I'm also the planner on La Vista Park. There is actually going to be a small parking lot right off of 16th Street for the park project, right kind of north of the parking lot for this project.
Okay.
But yes, there's several spots of parking and most of it is up the hill.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Chai, followed by Alexandra Barcello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Chai Wong. I was born and raised in Hayward, California. And I've always been a very proud resident of Hayward. Like whenever people ask me, I always very proudly said I was Hayward. I was from Hayward. And I guess people always, from the time I was growing up in the eighties through the nineties, people always asked like, why? Like, what's there to be proud of about Hayward? And I always had a difficult time answering that question. My go-to was always like, well, Tom Hanks went to school at Chabot College. So that was pretty cool. But like, yeah, most of the time that I lived there, like, I had a hard time talking about what there was to be proud of. But then more recently, I realized that as, like, most of the Bay Area became, like, really expensive to live in, Hayward was one of the few places that was still affordable. Like throughout most of the two thousand, probably after the, the housing bubble burst, like whenever people were looking for places to live, they needed to commute to the peninsula to work. Like it was really convenient and affordable to live in Hayward and just cross the San Mateo Bridge to get there. And I know that housing has been getting more and more expensive even in Hayward more recently. And I just want to say that like, this type of development is exactly what Hayward needs. And I feel like if Hayward keeps it up and continues their development of affordable housing, then I don't, I won't have to go back to saying that, you know, Tom Hanks went to Chabot College. I could keep saying that Hayward's an affordable place to live in the Bay Area. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Barcello. And she'll be, or yeah, she'll be followed by Ro Aguilar.
Hello, good evening, city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Alexandra Barcello and I'm a resident of Hayward and a parent of a current primary school student. And I'm here today just to share with you why I believe we need to make this, move this project forward and make the primary school a part of our community. I really believe in their mission to educate the leaders of tomorrow together as a community and to bring together all the important factors, to bring together mental health, physical health, teachers, parents and other specialties so that our children can get what they need. This is a really unique model. I don't know very many schools who share this model. I've worked in county mental health across the bridge and haven't heard of it. And one of the things that I think is really special about it is that all these individuals are willing to work together for the betterment of our community. Because as we know, if our children and our families are okay, it's going to have a direct impact on our communities. TPS really empowers us as parents and encourages us to participate. They work together on goal setting and really help the family as a whole. I know during the pandemic, they've helped with food, they've helped with resources, with social services. They really are about helping our community. And, you know, we chose to send our daughter to the primary school because not only is it their mission to educate her academically, but to teach her how to be proud of herself, to be proud of her community, her culture, to celebrate diversity, to stand up for what's right and to be a leader. And I hope that you consider the positive impacts that this school can have and can offer families in our community and that you allow them to build a school so that Hayward can be proud of it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ro Aguilar, followed by Daniella G.
Good evening, staff and members of the council. I want to applaud you tonight for putting forth this development. In particular, I, I share the concern about the earthquake situation. But I think your questions and making sure the development uses state-of-the-art engineering practices to mitigate the risk is the best that one can do in this situation. This development provides desperately needed low and very low-income rental housing. Though not owner-occupied, this development is on a spectrum of solutions, inclusionary housing being my personal favorite, to address the housing crisis. I support this development. I, I know it will increase your score in terms of RHNA. And again, that's, that's a, a healthy thing. And urge the council to affirm the planning commission decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniella G, followed by Jessica Pablo.
Hello. Hi, my name is Daniella and I just want to make sure you hear me well.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, great. Thank you so much. I live here in neighborhood. So I live in Broadway Street, that's just about the 16th Street. And I just want to bring to your attention, that's really true, that we have the big problem here with the traffic and the traffic that's coming from Moreau High School. And we have it for years. I live here for over 22 years. I moved from Europe and even I feel that I was born in Hayward. I love this place. So my house is the last house at the end of the street. But I can see everything what's going on down the street. I have troubles every day, every day going to Hancock Street, like going to grocery store. I have to just try to find a way how to go, even around Hancock Street is really hot. And the street is very narrow, even we stop and then we have to let someone, you know, from opposite traffic to move, you know. So I have these, you know, problems every day when I go to grocery store. But not only about the traffic, I just would say that this place is just hidden jam. And I would feel I support all low-income housing and all these projects. I don't think this is the right place and why I think so. This is really, we are on the fault. And we know two days ago, we had a Hayward earthquake here. I felt it in my house. I would ask you to consider again, why you want to build these houses here. I, I felt it in my house here, that's very single house, very, you know, one-story house. And I just went outside. I was, I was really afraid. And with all these concerns, I'm not supportive of this project. And I think also, on the other hand, you don't have enough, like grocery stores for Hayward, especially here, we close the food source. We don't have anything. If I want to do grocery shopping, I have to go to Fremont or Castro Valley or San Ramon to go to Safeway or to go to any other store. And I think this is something that we would think also, if you're building these houses, you would need more, you know, a capacity of the, you know, grocery stores, not only schools and all that. And also at the end, I want to say my kids, they also went to St. Clement's School. They went to Moreau High School. And I know everything what's going on here for the last 22 years. And I'm very supportive of my neighbors. And I really want to speak up and say that I want the best for Hayward, but I just, I don't see this is the right project for Hayward. And thank you so much again for your time, opportunity to speak up tonight.
Thank you. Jessica Pablo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Pablo. I am a Hayward resident. And I have been back and forth between Hayward and Union City. But I've been in Hayward, to be exact, for about 22 years now. I want to disclose that I am a primary school teacher at the Hayward site. But I'm also a TPS parent. My two sons, they attend school in East Palo Alto. And I'm really for the primary school, not only because I work there, because of the, because of the knowledge that my children bring home. Not only are they learning content and curriculum and learning so many things to push the academics, but more importantly, they're learning social emotional skills. In fact, when my child came home, the, the next day after the, when the pandemic hit and we all had to work from home, the first thing, my child was busy drawing pictures and the first thing he said was, mommy, I'm drawing a heart because I want to wish all of my school family well. And when he said it, he meant it with all of his heart. And that just blew me away because it, it just gave testament. Not only am I working somewhere that is considering social emotional, which is, it's something new, but also some, he's also picking up these skills. And these can be very hard even for adults to learn. I'm excited that the primary school could be opening and possibly in partnership with HUSD, which is a dream. It truly is a dream. And I'm also excited to see, you know, just the community coming together. Truly, the work that we do is integration. To the children that we have, not only are we tending to them academically, but also social emotionally. Should there be a health need with regards to asthma or possibly something else happening within the family, then we talk about it. We partner with other organizations. And I make, I'm really excited because, you know, because, you know, in my twenty-one years being in Hayward, the one thing that I'm hoping for is an just an opportunity. Um, many people do not have that chance. So I'm really excited and I'm I'm hoping that this really goes through. And that's all I want to say, but thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no other requests to speak that I can see either here in the chambers or on Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and will I will entertain council uh comments um and a motion hopefully on this. And I think um I'd like to, well, we started.
Mayor, sorry, can I please interject? Um, I'm getting a lot of concern still messages from the public that they can't hear the audio on channel fifteen. Is there any way someone from staff would be willing? I know obviously we can't repeat every public comment, but just kind of summarize, it was pretty um balanced in terms of people's support and against, but is there any way someone just could kind of recap for the public's sake? Because I'm I'm getting a lot of inquiries still about it.
Um, I think that's a little bit too much to ask. Um, I mean, where there were, there were a number of speakers and there were speakers on both sides of the issue. They raised a lot of this of similar concerns, um both supporting the project and opposing the project. Raised seismic and parking and traffic questions were among the chief comments of of the people opposing the project, uh the need for affordable school, I mean affordable housing and support of the primary school. Were I, you know, were made on behalf of the project. And I don't know, I I can't give you a tally, but they were, they were fairly even.
Thank you. That I think that's what they needed to hear. I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Now, um, would you like, okay, let's see, we have members of me, yeah. All right, I'm going to try. So, all right, uh, we'll start again on the dais here and I'll go to um Councilmember Salinas.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, you know, I uh um, I take every development uh seriously up here. We um, you know, I've been up here sometime and we've um, you know, and and we've approved developments and we've um opposed developments. And I um, and so I, when I read staff's report and when I read all of the email, uh particularly the, I think the um, the email that is opposed to this written by uh Julie Zhang. And I I believe it was written by, you know, probably in in collaboration with with neighbors and and others. It was thoughtful and I think uh her and her neighbors articulated, um, you know, their concerns. And also listening to, you know, public comment and I and I I heard, I listened to the neighbors and and I know, and I'm and I'm also very familiar with that area. I know it's a it's a tight space up there. Uh, and I know you, you know, you also have St. Clement's and you got Moreau Catholic High School up there. And um, so I, you know, my, I say all of that because uh you know, for myself and I'm and I'm sure the others up here uh and uh my colleagues that are online. You know, we read these staff reports, we read the analyses, we listen to the experts and um and when we decide, uh and when you and when we make decisions up here, um, we take them very seriously. Um, and I, and that's why we bring in our expert staff and we bring in, you know, our expert engineers and geotechnical engineers. Uh, of course, our public safety, I know uh Chief Contreras uh takes um public safety very seriously. And uh, you know, I think uh his reputation uh and his expertise on on matters of this are incredibly respected throughout the city. And so um I uh, and this is a a very complex project. And um, and and I think my my colleagues would agree to that. This this is not a um, you know, uh, we're, we're building nowadays in in very tight spaces that require a lot of expertise and a lot of incredible engineering feats, you know, I uh um that I've seen. And so uh, I think for me personally, I think there are some community benefits uh for this project. You know, one is uh the whole affordable housing element. Uh, we um the need for affordable housing today in the city is um is is high. The need for uh housing um uh medium income, moderate, low and very low income families is is um is high. It's necessary. And and um, I think this project meets that, meets that goal, a goal that we all, I think, as a council uh has set for ourselves. You know, the other um I think uh expectation that this project meets, at least for me, is it is a a quite innovative cooperation between development and education. Uh, we're getting a school and um where is, you know, is much needed. You know, the the school is going to be focusing on, you know, it's it's got K twelve, but um with an incredible high focus on preschool and before kindergarten. And I have, you know, I have uh uh colleagues that are in early childhood education today and, you know, they're, they're the first ones to tell me every time. You know, learning doesn't start the day before kindergarten. And and we need today, we need schools that focus on uh primary grades before kindergarten. And this project does that. Um, and thirdly, you know, reading the 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 geotechnical report and listening to the, you know, our expert and of course, listening to staff. You know, I do think it it does meet uh the the threshold. And um, and also listening to the testimony of our uh fire chief, I think public safety is 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 paramount and and it will be uh protected. Uh, so for those three reasons, uh I'll be supporting this project and and with that, I'll uh, I'd like to move the item.
Okay, so the staff recommendation has been moved by Councilmember Salinas and seconded by Councilmembers Armanio. Uh, Councilmembers Armanio, do you like to talk about the?
Am I next?
Yes, you're next.
Okay, uh real close to the microphone so it's uh people can hear me.
Yes, please.
Uh, so I, yes, um, uh colleague Salinas is correct, it is a complex uh uh project. Both sides really presented good arguments, uh but one side swayed me over the other. And there are eight reasons really as to why I support the the project. Uh, let's see. Uh, it's electrical, uh no more gas, so that's good. Uh, let's see, thirteen over thirteen hundred square feet of open space right next to a fifty acre open space La Vista Park, which we'll be talking about later on. And that's all, it's always something very, very important. It is safe geologically and public safety wise as per our fire chief. Trees and solar panels, that's something that's always dear to my heart, a lot of trees on the complex and solar energy EV stations. Uh, that's something that's important. I I I won't get into the parking because I think there the ceiling, I mean, a million parking slots out there. I believe that we are going to try, the city will try to do something with Sixteenth Street so that there is no parking there. Uh, it was approved by the planning commission. Let's see. And then a hundred and seventy-six affordable units. And as we all know, people keep moving to the Bay Area, people keep moving to Hayward and they all want affordable units. We have something like four hundred and eighty-nine unhoused homeless individuals. Of course, these folks will not be able to rent there, but I think it's a uh, we have folks who are one check away to Tommy from becoming homeless and that's really some for something for them. Uh, our two daughters moved away from Hayward because they couldn't afford to uh live in Hayward. Uh, so that's not something that's good. I mentioned trees and open space. Uh, and then um, we have many children in the city of Hayward and we have a school here that has gone out and established some partnerships with a lot of good different organizations, including Eden Housing. And it is being built and managed by Eden Housing. They have a long history of doing this. And one of my top reasons is that it is going to be a definite improvement to Tennyson Road uh community. And I've been a resident of Tennyson Road Corridor and Community since nineteen seventy-eight. And that's something that in my mind is very, very important. Because at the end of Tennyson Road on the east side, there will be a gateway into this particular school and project and to La Vista Park and to the quarry, which is off to the right. So I'm hoping my colleagues also follow along with this project. And thank you all the folks who spoke for and against the project. Very, very important staff. Thanks for the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambnun.
Thank you. I really want to appreciate everybody who spoke both in person and online um and by by email uh the planning commission and here tonight um and for the conversations that we've been having throughout the last few years um about this project and the community concerns as well as to our city staff. Um, I am too, will support uh the denial of the appeal um for a lot of reasons that have already been articulated. If folks want to talk with me more, I'm happy to do that, but it's getting on in the evening. And so I'm not actually going to go into all of that. I did want to um ask one thing, though. We do periodically do um neighborhood conversations, um either with the police department or with city staff. And I wonder if there's an opportunity here to do that with um with traffic, with the traffic division, with Moreau High and um and Clement, uh St. Clement's, just to sort of try and see if there's some ways to mitigate the existing issues in the neighborhood. Is that a realistic thing?
Yes, and we're also right now engaging in the series of City Hall T U meetings. And I'm, I will look and see um while the council is making comments on when the meetings are going to be in South Hayward. I I'm not, I know we just had, I think, the first meeting we started with Fairway Park. So let me check and see, but we, that doesn't mean that we can't have a targeted meeting in this area um with some folks, so.
I appreciate that. Um, and um, I think, you know, I wonder about electric bikes being part like shared, given the the hub at the Bart Station um might be part of that tran- um traffic demand. Anyway, lots of opportunities here. So thank you to all.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember uh Marquez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just also want to disclose that I did read all of the email communication from the appellant and neighbors. So I want to thank everyone for uh taking the time to address your concerns. I know it's not easy. It's a very difficult situation. There's pros and cons, but I just really appreciate everyone's willingness to come out and speak to what um they most care about. Um, so for me, I I am satisfied with the mitigation um issues that have been outlined and the conditional use permit. I really want to thank the Fire Chief Cotradas for being here tonight, his role in this. And I just think this is a really good example of community partnership, you know, affordable housing, a new innovative school model, uh public open space, close proximity to public transportation. So for me, um, I know there are concerns, safety concerns, but those are going to exist in multiple areas throughout our community. So for me, it's just really important that our community remains inclusive. Um, I'm excited about the opportunity for people to actually live, work and be educated in our community. So I I feel like this project has far more benefits um that outweigh the concerns. The concerns are valid. But I am confident that amongst our leadership here on the council, as well as executive team and staff, we will continue to help uh address those concerns. Obviously, those, some of those concerns existed pre this project. Um, hopefully, uh, we could continue to work together to mitigate those those concerns. So I really uh commend Councilmember Lambnun for her suggestion and getting a targeted meeting with this neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods. So I'm happy to support the project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wahab.
Thank you. Um, so I I do want to just highlight a couple of things that that I'd like to have staff um kind of focus on. Number one is that this parcel is about twenty-eight point five acres with seven acres being developed. I would like for some type of concept as to how can we widen these roads? How can we utilize maybe even something through this parcel? Whether it's the sides or kind of making things a little bit easier for the neighbors surrounding this particular parcel. Uh, one of the other things I did want to mention is um that this parcel also, it's, it's, it's actually interesting to me. All of the Caltrans parcels that we have been discussing has been near the Hayward Fault. Um, and we have not received this much um feedback and specifically negative feedback on any of the other projects. Uh, I I find it um very interesting specifically because this project is the only project of all the Caltrans, the hundred acres that we are pretty much dealing with uh for the last, you know, several years, that is one hundred percent affordable housing. And one of the things that I always try to caution um the city on is that I do not want for the flatlands to be a certain type of housing and the hills to be a certain type of housing and we only invite certain people in certain neighborhoods. We need um inclusive uh housing all around. Um, when we develop, we have to be very, very mindful of how we incorporate all income levels to be part of a community. That is actually one of the biggest concerns I have in society right now, that um we are becoming extremely elitist. Um, and that is something that I'm very concerned with. Um, I do agree that, you know, faults and in in general are very concerning, especially as we keep hearing that there's going to be a big one. Um, you know, we've been talking about that for years. Um, but at the same time, because of so many homes being around the Hayward Fault, I personally live in a flood zone. Um, that's always a concern, um as well as the fact that if you live in a fault zone, uh that is a significant concern. I do think the technology that we have today in development is significantly um beneficial. And at the same time, the homes that were built fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years ago um are actually the ones that I'm actually more worried about than new development. Um, with that said, I do think that we need to kind of reassess, you know, what are we looking at when we are talking about development in this area across the board, including um improving the homes that are there, whether that's providing grants for retrofitting or whatever the case may be. I think that that should be on our radar as well. Um, the parking situation is concerning to me. I have always brought up the fact that, you know, we still live in a society that we all pretty much drive cars. It is, as my dad says, um, if, right? Um, if you want to go somewhere, whether you work in San Francisco or not, you know, over the weekend, you are going to be shopping and picking up groceries and picking your kids and so forth. Um, so I think that's concerning. Again, on this roughly twenty-eight point five acres of land, I think something can be negotiated where it's an extra ten thousand, you know, square feet where you know, I don't know how much more parking can be developed, but um I think that that number is concerning if it's a hundred and seventy-eight or eighty-something parking spots, uh two hundred and seventy-six uh units. I also find it concerning if um the residents are utilizing um the primary school. It it just does not really make sense, especially if teachers are parking there and so forth. As far as the primary school, I do appreciate um the the countless efforts uh that have been made to try to be as inclusive and as informative as possible. I am very much looking for um, you know, Hayward. I am very much looking for, you know, Hayward teachers and staff to be integrated. I don't, I want this to be a very much inclusive system. With that said, again, out of the 100 acres of Caltrans properties that we've been kind of discussing overall, our goal is to ensure that the good chunk of the housing that is provided is affordable, is mixed income. And this definitely adds to that number with 100% affordable. How rare is that, that type of project? It is extremely rare in the Bay Area. It's also extremely rare on the eastern side of Mission. So I will be supporting this project, and I do want some of the residents' concerns to be really fleshed out and discussed in meetings moving. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to join what sounds like the whole rest of the council in supporting this project. I, you too have, though, listened to all of the concerns. And, and they are very, the, actually, the seismic issues aside, many of the other concerns are the same that we are hearing all through the city whenever we entertain any housing project. I don't think in Hayward, you know, there is, there is as much nymism as certainly in some other communities. But, you know, we're all concerned about the quality of life and livability of our neighborhoods. And so I appreciate all of the people who came out to comment on this. But, and I do want to disclose that while I really didn't have meetings with either Eden Housing or the primary school on, you know, in recent, recently on this particular project, I, you know, I've long had a lot to do with Eden Housing in terms of participating in some of the programs that they have had and just, you know, and supporting other projects, the many other projects we have in the city. And, and the primary school as well. I've had a number of conversations with the leaders of the primary school and actually recently read a very fascinating book called Don't Let the Pigeon Drive the Bus to a group of four-year-olds at the present location of their school in San Leandro. So, so I will disclose that. But I truly also appreciate that the, you know, the newer and new, we, some of these are new residents in Hayward are relatively new up in the reserve. Some of them and along East 16th Street are more longer-term residents. And, you know, I appreciate all the comments, but I do think both the developer and the staff have, have really addressed those issues. We can't address the cars issue. The earthquake, let me just say that having been on the 15th floor of a 30-story building in downtown San Francisco on landfill development during the 1989 earthquake, I can tell you that even back then, buildings were being built, even 30-story buildings, to withstand such seismic shaking. And although it was probably the scariest moment of my entire life, I made it and the building still stands today. And, you know, we all made it out just fine. I have faith in our, you know, in our modern, in our engineers to be able to address that. We know we need more density everywhere in the Bay Area if we're going to provide the housing that we need and that we all can't keep driving cars all by ourselves, you know, to wherever we want to go. We have to find other ways to, to get ourselves around. And we're trying to do that. And there are projects coming along, along Mission Boulevard, more rapid bus. We're trying to make better accommodations for bicycles. And cars are going to need increasingly to share the road. And hopefully, that will lead to more people finding alternative ways. I think about these developments as we're going up the hill, because I love to walk, but I don't necessarily like to walk uphill. At least, at least in recent years, I don't like that as much. And, but, you know, there's technology again. I think technology is going to answer, and I envision, you know, some small vehicle of like a golf cart size perhaps being on call, like, you know, and being actually self-driven, because we know that's possible these days, to maybe pick people up down on Mission Boulevard when they get there and take them back up to these houses. That may be a little fantasizing on my part, but I truly believe something like that is going to occur someday. So with that faith and because we so need the affordable housing and the school that this project, and this is a very innovative school, and it's just exactly what our district needs. These kids will eventually go to Hayward Unified School District, but at some point, but they're going to get really intense help. And the really important part is that they get it when they're four years, four years old before, you know, in the preschool, in the preschool time of their lives, so that by the time they get even to kindergarten, they're going to be really ready for it. So I thank everybody involved. I thank the staff for amazing, an amazing job all the way through on this, on this project of, through the Planning Commission and now with us. Very thorough report. And I know everybody's not pleased with the outcome, but, or may not be pleased with the outcome, but it's time for us to vote. So Madam City Clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. For the record, if we could restate who made the motion, those Councilmembers, Selena?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's, the motion to support the staff recommendation was made by Councilmember Selinas and seconded by Councilmembers Armanio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Councilmember Andrews has recused herself on this item.
Thank you, recuse.
Councilmember Lambnun.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Selinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab.
Yes.
Councilmember Armanio.
She.
Mayor Halliday.
Yes, and the motion carries with six aye votes and one member having recused herself. And with that, we are now coming on item number 11. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they would like a very, yes, I'm seeing, yes. We will take a five-minute recess and be back for item number 11, which is the item regarding the Mission Crossings development. Are we ready? We ready to start? It seems so much emptier now, but, all right, I'm going to call this meeting back to We ready to start? It seems so much emptier now, but all right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. This meeting of the Hayward City Council, I would just like to remind everyone who, I understand the problem that people are having if you are watching on YouTube or, or Channel 15, you are having difficulty hearing the speakers who are speaking from Zoom, who actually include council members as well. And so I just, there is a way around that by calling in, I mean, and we've got it broadcast, I know.
And I want to apologize, we just realized that the, so the phone number, so if you do not have the Zoom application, you can call in by phone and listen and hear all of the speakers. The only places where it's not working is on the YouTube and Channel 15. Unfortunately, we do have the phone numbers and the meeting ID and passcode, but we realized that that was for last week's meeting. So we're updating that, but it is on the agenda. So the correct meeting is on in the agenda. And so I'll just say those out loud here, and then we're going to update the the screen share. It's either 1-669-900-6833, or you can call 1-346-248-7799. The meeting ID is 825-5250-6475, and the password is 8151331630, and that will be updated on screen momentarily.
Okay, good. Thank you. So we are back, as I said, to now moving on to item number 11 on our agenda, and that is regarding the missions, mission crossings development. We're being asked to adopt a resolution approving a request to modify the conditions of approval related to fees, project phasing, and inclusionary housing, and to add some other conditions of approval. And so I will turn this over to.
Mayor, I need to make an announcement.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Marquez?
Yes, I need to recuse myself.
Yes, yes, okay, go ahead.
Can I do that now?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. Okay, so I just want to share with the public, I've made this announcement before, but just want to disclose that in the fall of 2020, I was privy to sensitive information as a member of the public, not my role as a council member. And because of that information, it may be perceived that I'm unable to be objective. So for that reason, I will be recusing myself from this item. So I'm going to disconnect, and if someone can just text me when to rejoin, thank you.
All right, we'll see you back for item number 12. Thank you. So with that, and did we get council member? Yes, I can see her there. Councilmember Andrews is back with us. Okay, so we're ready to go. And is that going to be? I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Ott to start us off.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn over to Sarah Bowser, the Deputy Director of Development Services. She'll be making a presentation virtually.
And again, that number, if you need to hear her, is now on the screen, I hope, correct.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Just, just real quick, sorry. You're presenting to us, just, you know, you know, the screen on PowerPoint where it shows you the next slide even?
Yes.
It's not the main screen. So I think if you have like two screens up, we need to get that main screen up.
Is that better?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Wonderful, no problem, thank you. Let's see, okay, so good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the Hayward community. I am Sarah Bowser, I'm the Deputy Development Services Director, and we're here tonight to consider the most recent requests from Meritage Homes related to a modification of conditions of approval for the previously entitled Mission Crossings project. By way of project background, this project or, you know, designations for the site for which this project was approved started back in 2013 with the adoption of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which designated this property as a catalyst site and within a key retail area that was carried forward with the adoption of the Mission Boulevard Form-Based Code, which designated the front 4.1 acres for strictly commercial uses. In 2015, the Council Economic Development Committee reinforced their desires for, or the city's desires for commercial uses consistent with both the Economic Development Strategic Plan and the Form-Based Code. And in 2017, when the project was approved, the council approved the project with a particular phasing condition that required the commercial component of the project, which at the time was proposed with a hotel and retail, to be built in step with the approved residential development that was on the back half of that property. In 2018, construction of the residential units began, and the hotel permits were going through their development phase and looking to obtain building permits. In late 2019, the hotel permit was ready, but it was never issued. As we all know, in early 2020 came the pandemic, and we received a request in 2020 to modify the conditions of approval, specifically the phasing condition because of some concerns over being able to finance that project because of the pandemic. That request by the council was denied in 2020, and then in 2021, we received a second request, the request that's before you tonight, related to modifying the conditions of approval. I do want to just provide a little additional background related to the zoning and the history on that project. As you can see before you, the project site is located here off of Mission Boulevard, near Toronto and Dollar. And the site originally, as you can see, had split zoning. The back half of the property or the property not along the Mission Boulevard frontage did allow for residential units, provided that a conditional use permit was granted, and the front portion was limited to only commercial uses, residential was not allowed. As a part of the entitlement, the request was to modify the zoning designations of the property as shown here on the left, what it was prior to the entitlement being granted by the city, and on the left, what the zoning was following the entitlement of the project. Council was supportive of the rezoning at that time to reduce the amount of area that would be limited to commercial, primarily because the commercial component in the Mission Crossings project included a hotel, a business concept hotel, along with retail. So that just gives you some context on the background. Now, bringing you to current and present day, I've got an aerial shot of the Mission Crossings area showing the vacant property at the front along Mission Boulevard, which was the, the site location for the approved hotel and retail. And then, as you can see behind that, you can see a number of the residential units that are part of the Mission Crossings project that are under construction or have been constructed at this point. I'm noting a number of buildings that are in various stages of construction. Buildings seven and eight are actually fully constructed. They just have not received their certificates of occupancy, and I'm going to go over a table shortly. But I also wanted to bring to your attention sort of the location of where some of the other buildings are located relative to some of the community attributes that have been of a point of discussion and interest as this project has moved forward. So between Buildings 2 and 3 is where you can find the Community Garden Park area that has been constructed and been available, completely constructed for quite some time. It's just been unavailable due to outstanding construction that needs to still occur in Buildings 1, 2, and 3 that are on either side of the park. And then there's access off of Toronto Dollar to the project that has not been open and accessible to the community because of the, the construction that has not been completed for Buildings 9 and 13. Now, the next slide shows a table of sort of current status of the various buildings in construction. And this is important because it's tied directly to some of the modified condition language that we'll be discussing in the next few slides. So as I mentioned, Buildings 1, 2, and 3, which are the ones that are right up around either side of the community garden, those permits have been issued, but slab construction is the only thing that's occurred so far. There's been no vertical construction on those buildings. Building 4 has been constructed, that is the model home complex. Occupancy permits have not been issued, TCO or Temporary Certificate of Occupancy permits have been issued, but those are for the model home complex. Nobody is living in those units at this time. Buildings 5, 9, and 13, which are the buildings that are along the Toronto Avenue side of the project, those permits are still pending with the city, they have not been issued yet, but they are ready to be issued. As I mentioned, Buildings 7 and 8 have been constructed, but no occupancy permits have been issued yet. And then the remaining buildings have been constructed and occupancy permits have been issued. As I mentioned, in earlier, the, this month, we received a modification to the application for Meritage Homes, requesting the modification to the condition, specifically the phasing condition that tied the development of the hotel to the development of the residential units. And there were some different, some additional offerings that Meritage wanted to put on the table for the council's consideration, which we are discussing this evening. So the first offer was that the applicant would pay all outstanding permit and impact fees, including all outstanding affordable housing fees for the project prior to issuance of any additional certificates of occupancy for the development. This is captured in the modification to condition of approval number four. The applicant and developer, in addition to paying all of the affordable housing fees for the project, has agreed to enter into an affordable housing agreement, deed restricting 14 units for moderate income households, which would be equally dispersing those units within the remaining six buildings to be constructed. That's Building 1, 2, 3, 5, 9, and 13, and reflected in modification to condition of approval number 164. The applicant and developer has also agreed to next work on the construction of Buildings 2 and 3, which are right next to the Community Garden Urban Farms, so that they can quickly open that up for the community's use. And this is reflected in modification to condition of approval number 166. In addition, staff also wanted to address some of the other concerns and things that we've heard, not only from the community but from council, which were concerns over the lot on the frontage remaining vacant. Now, the Meritage does not own that front property, it is owned by another entity, the Manchester Hotel Group. However, the applicant has agreed to work with the city and Manchester Hotel Group in preparing and potentially implementing a plan for improving the aesthetic and visual quality, including some potential improvements to support interim or pop-up uses of that site in the interim until something can be done with that frontage property. And that's reflected in the additional new condition of approval number 167. We also heard from a number of members of the community concerns over being able to access their development off of the Dollar Street Toronto Avenue side of the project. And so we have added an additional condition, a new condition, condition number 168, that would require the applicant or developer within 30 days to submit a plan for the city's review, which would outline a plan for providing safe interim pedestrian access to the project site from that side of the project with the goal of trying to maintain that access throughout the balance of construction. With those modifications to the conditions of approval, staff is recommending that the council approve the, the current request by Meritage by adopting the attached resolution to the staff report, which memorializes the revised request for Meritage and incorporates modifications to original conditions of approval number 4, 164, and 166, as well as includes the addition of new conditions of approval 167 and 168. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, and if you could take your, yeah, screen share there. Thank you. And so I'm going to ask if there are any questions from my colleagues. I'm not seeing anyone with their hands raised here, so. Yeah, so we'll move on to public comments on this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the item? Well, come forward and, yes, go ahead, come forward and give your name.
Could you please, sorry?
Turn on the microphone.
Please check your, yes, thank you.
Is that better? There we go. Sorry about that. See, I'm out of practice. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and I wanted to say I've spent the last 20 years of my career working in with, on behalf of local government, including with the firm that's actually your lobbyist. And so I have deep, deep respect for your team and especially the staff, just the work that has gone into the history of this project and the preparation even for tonight is really impressive. So thank you for your consideration and be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I think, let's see. Councilmember Zermanio, do you have a question? Okay, I don't think we have any questions. Are there any other, let's see, I think we do have a couple of people on Zoom who want to speak. Danny Johnson?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you for your time. I'm recommending that the city accept the proposal to complete Mission Crossing. So our families lived here for two years, and access to the private park, urban garden, barbecue area, and a second access to our community via Toronto have all been inaccessible the entire time we've lived here. These aren't simply amenities. Our children don't have a safe place to play within our neighborhood, and without a second access, this poses a safety hazard, as well as limit access by first responders. This is a really personal issue for my family, with the impact stretching from our home, with me working from home for the next six to 12 months, it stretches to my job, and even through our community when we step outside. We simply can't get away from this. Additionally, it's affected our resale value, our ability to self-govern within the constructs of an HOA until Meritage divests its ownership, and limits our options to refinance our homes, as some lenders will not permit a refi on a community which can't be legally completed. I appreciate the council's response to our emails of concern, and that several members of the city council have actually come directly out to our homes and to better understand firsthand the impact that this has had on our family. So again, I thank you for appreciating the positive impact a completed development will have in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Maha Balashandran, Madam City Clerk, are you, yeah, thank you for the timer. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Mahalakshmi Balashandran, homeowner and resident at Mission Crossing. I would like to extend my gratitude and thanks to the mayor and council members to have taken the time to hear us. We, I would like to let you know that we are first-time homeowners who've moved to Hayward, impressed by the city's 2040 vision. The problems that we are facing right now are not we had anticipated since we're first-time homeowners again. As I had mentioned earlier to the mayor and the council members who had visited the community in person, I would like to reiterate that since all the guest parking spaces on site have not been opened yet, and the connection to Toronto Avenue is blocked, it adds to the parking and connectivity issues since our only means of ingress and egress is only through Berry Avenue. Not having access to any of the private amenity spaces is creating safety concerns to my child and the other kids who end up laying in the driveways. I appreciate that the city is looking for accountability to the conditions of approval, but I kindly request you to help us relieve us of all these problems that has been caused by an unfinished site. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak, so I'll close. I think we do have some other requests to speak. Bill Espinola?
Hello, Mayor? Yes, Mayor?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry, I was having a little technical difficulties. Yeah, I'd like to speak on this item. As a neighbor that's fairly close to where this project is located, my question is. My question is, if you go ahead and release the the conditions for that, so that the developer can finish the project, what's going to become of the lot? I mean, how long is it going to be vacant? What's going to go there? Is it still going to be a hotel? Or is something else going to happen with that lot? That would be my question. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Espinola, you're asking us to foresee the future and tell you what's going to happen, and we can't. I, you know, I do know that we are working very hard with the with the owner of the property, the current owner of the property and to get got a use. And in the meantime, one of the conditions we're talking about tonight is to do something to screen the property. So I I can say it's the council's strong desire and will probably, you know, insist on having the whatever happens there be some sort of commercial development. But beyond that, I can't, you know, we can't really answer that question. Our next speaker is Nico Nagel.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Right off the bat, I appreciate you all being up and taking the item this late into the evening. Appreciate your time and all the work that you do. Really quickly, I'll quickly introduce myself and my organization. My name is Nico Nagel. I'm the East Bay organizer for a group called the Housing Action Coalition. Relatively new to Hayward, but we've been working across the Bay Area and up in Sacramento, working on getting enough housing built to solve our housing and affordability shortage for close to twenty years now. You know, the problem that we spend our days trying to solve is to get enough housing built to solve for affordability and to make sure that that we are not seeing all the ills that come from the lack of housing that we've had for for past decades. It's it's projects like these where, you know, sometimes there are breakdowns in delivering on that housing and 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 that can be, you know, an unfortunate issue in in creating homes for people to live in. You know, when we when we first came to this project, we understood that that was that was sort of the impasse. And so, you know, it, the project has developed, or the the situation has developed over the past couple of weeks, as I understand it. And I just want to say that I appreciate, you know, your willingness as a council to to do that work and to make sure that that homes are delivered and that that projects are are delivered for for folks who want to live in Hayward. You know, I I think I just urge you tonight to to continue your strong record on housing. Really, you're, I think you're sort of underseen leadership in the Bay Area. And to make sure that that this this project is delivered in full and it's in its residential portion. Once again, really appreciate you all taking the time. Really appreciate all the work that you've done. And I urge you to to move the residential piece of this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I do not see any further speakers either on Zoom or yeah. So I'm going to close public comment on this item and and go to my colleagues. I'll call on Councilmember Zermanio.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. And Sarah, I was looking for Sarah over there. Sarah, Sarah's somewhere in virtual land. So one of the things that I think all of us up here are always concerned about, and I certainly am, one of my priorities are residents. In this particular case, our residents are needing some of the amenities that they were promised. And I think if we approve staff's recommendation, they will be able to take advantage and finally be able to drive the way they want to, you know, take care and play in the playground and take advantage of the open space. So those are the main reasons that I'm I move on the on staff's recommendation. Thank you.
All right. So this motion to approve the staff recommendation is made by Councilmember Zermanio, seconded by Councilmember Salinas. Would you like to?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I I just, I couldn't help but to think about and reflect immediately after he hung up was Bill Espinola's comment. And, you know, this is, you know, talk about, you know, when we're up here, we have to take some, sometimes we have to take some tough votes. And this is a, this is a tough one for me. Nonetheless, as Councilmembers Zermanio appropriately put it, you know, we have people living in this development now, and they need access to the amenities. And this project is, and and the pandemic has created this scenario where it's, you know, which is making this a very difficult decision. But nonetheless, I think tonight we're making this decision for the benefit of the of the families that live in this development. And as for what happens in the front, I am I'm sure that this arrangement will, one, improve the front in the short term, create some kind of activity out there that will benefit not only the the neighborhood there, but the surrounding neighborhood. And I know our economic development team is looking at this. I know staff is looking at this. So I'm voting for this with the hopes that the neighborhood doesn't look at a big dirt square in the near future. And so with that said, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wahab?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just for full transparency, I did actually meet with this team and went to the site my first time. This project was approved before I actually got on council. I wasn't too familiar with the details until it came out last year. And I will say that for the most part, with that being said, you know, COVID happened. I know a lot of people were expecting a hotel. The reality is things change. So when I visited this site, I was, you know, listening to a lot of the residents. I listened to basically what the developers also had to state. The reality is that the hotel piece is now separated from this project. And we have to understand that as as a separate project, as a as a complete separate project. I do consider that this project is is one that we have to move forward with. I'm very ecstatic about the fact that we have fourteen D restricted homes that are for middle income individuals. Again, just similar to the previous item. Mission in particular is is largely known in a lot of areas as a more affluent area. And the mere fact that we can get, again, mixed income individuals into project, the better, because we want to make this city of Hayward very well-rounded, very inclusive and much more. So I will be supporting this. And I want to thank the developers for kind of just making sure that we kind of move forward. And I'm glad that we, you know, got this far pretty quickly. I will also state that to Mr. Espinola's question about the the vacant lot, you know, that is not something we want to see either as as council. Sitting on the Economic Development Committee, I would suggest that, you know, residents in the area, as well as the economic development team, kind of collaborate, communicate as to what do they want to see. It may not be a hotel. That's the honest truth, and we have to kind of live with that. It may be a hotel. Who knows? But just genuine engagement with residents as well as, you know, just the community and the businesses there. I do want to see some economic development wise there. I will also say, very similar to previous comment to staff on the previous item, when people state that there is no grocery store, that there's no other amenities and so forth. One, we know that they're in the works, specifically in this part of town. We need to highlight that more. I think we need to do a little bit more, again, social media pushes, newsletters, the stack, announcements, things like that, for people to actually know what is going on in our city and near them. Other than that, I do appreciate this, and I am very much looking forward to this project being fully complete and for us to focus on the vacant land.
Thanks. Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the presentation and bringing an alternative to this or bringing a solution to this this issue we have here. I would like to say that I'm disappointed in how this project turned out, but I'm happy to hear that we are going to have affordable housing a component, indeed restricted. I do feel that it's unfortunate that that wasn't part of the project originally and brought forward to council. I believe that we should be starting day one, if at all possible, with the with these types of projects. And I do think this is a huge lesson learned for the city to see the strategies that developers use when they want to have housing and only housing, but bring it under the guise of mixed use. So I hope anytime we have a mixed use development of this size, we replay these videos of these meetings to our planning commission and replay these videos to our planning staff, so they can see what to look out for when we are recommending projects to council. I appreciate the community for reaching out to us. I too also visited the site and it's unfortunate that you are all part of this. You all were were just treated horribly as as customers for this project. And it's unfortunate that it got to this. But I'm happy that the city is getting a community benefit by providing more affordable housing. So I will approve this project. But again, I'm not happy that we're not getting an amenity that could actually provide resources to our community as part of the project as what was originally proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lambnun?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues. And also the appreciation of staff working closely to try and get to resolution. I want to disclose that I did visit. Thank you to the team that hosted the residents out at the site and appreciated hearing and getting to know folks in our community. And thank you to you all for investing in Hayward. I sorry, I lost my train of thought for one second. Yeah, I just wanted to sort of add my disappointment that things were not the way we had promised them. And so in addition to the city's learning, I think there's also, I hope, some learning for the development community, that when Hayward says we want a full, complete community for our residents, we do mean it. And so I appreciate the sides coming together and finding a solution. I look forward to pop up businesses, pop up art, whatever it is that makes sense. And to any developer who says, well, we're a housing developer, but you commit to a commercial development that that we mean that commitment. And so it is not okay to abdicate that responsibility. So thank you, everybody, for coming to the table, and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. And I'll be supporting the motion too, for many of the reasons that have been expressed. And I do think Councilmember Lambnun just said it very well. We you know, this is difficult. And and I know that the residents have have waited a long time for us to get to this, but we only have gotten to it because the developer finally came up with some something that, you know, we recognize as valuable to our community with, you know, dedicating those fourteen units for, you know, as affordable. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't really erase the hole in Mission Boulevard. But I also have a lot of faith that with the housing there and with all the other housing, including the project we just talked about a while ago, going up around the area that we will be able to attract a use to that that site. And with that, I will, on this motion by Councilmembers.
I'm sorry, before you do that, there was, there was a public speaker who wasn't able to raise her hand.
Yeah, I I did. We kept the public hearing open for a while. And I, you know, and asked for public comment. So I wasn't going to call on an additional raised hand at this point. The speaker had spoken earlier, so I don't think that there shouldn't have been a technical problem. But if you feel that I should reopen the public hearing at this point, after all the council members have spoken.
I mean, I think the city attorney and I just.
If that member of the public already spoke, then there would be no need.
That not on this item. But I'm just saying that the I don't know what the technical problem was, but the speaker had spoken earlier this evening.
If there was a technical problem with this speaker now at this current.
Then I should reopen the public.
I would recommend opening it just for this one speaker and then closing it.
All right, we'll go ahead and do that, though. I'm going to reopen the public hearing and call on Ro Aguilar. Is she with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I I'm sorry. It was a technical difficulty on my end. And I don't know if my comments are even relevant anymore, but I feel a need to get them in the record. So I'm just going to say that I think that you should hold off on the vote on this tonight. Renegotiate with the developer on the commercial property for different commercial than a hotel, because obviously, he's not going to be able to build a hotel. And so maybe you have other commercial, other retail there. And you could have, you know, a revised time phasing for that, project phasing. And in exchange for that, I'm always looking for exchanges between the city and developers. In exchange for that, of the thirty-seven units remaining that have no permits, no occupancy, and no construction, permits but no construction, that's thirty-seven units. I guess fourteen of those are moderate. How about having twelve of those units below income or very low income in exchange for relaxing the commercial hotel requirement on the commercial property? We can get these low income, very low income units in this development, because they're not, the buildings aren't constructed yet. And this is the perfect opportunity. So continue it. Continue the dialogue with the developer. See if that is feasible, which I think it is, because the buildings aren't built yet. And you'll have twelve low and very low income units here, spread out throughout the remaining thirty-seven units. Twelve low, very low, fourteen affordable. And it will be a true inclusionary housing development, true inclusionary. I'd love to see that somewhere in Hayward. So anyway, that was my, going to be my comment. I know it's late. I know you're all ready to go, but I think there's an opportunity here, and I think the developer might be open to it. So thank you for taking my comment. I apologize for the technical difficulty and have a good evening.
Thank you. Now, seeing no further request to speak from the public, I'm going to close public comments again. Councilmember Wahab, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. To Ms. Aguilar, I appreciate your consistent advocacy for affordable housing. I will say that the empty lot, you know, the site that everyone refers to as the hotel, is not owned by this developer at this time. So that is where we're at, and hence why we can't push anything else. I do also want to highlight, and maybe it wasn't clear enough, the fourteen deed restricted units. the 14 deed restricted units are on top of the already paid for in Lufies that would go to affordable housing. So we got, I don't want to say double, but pretty much what we were looking for. And also the community has a right to kind of move on. It's been several years that they've been waiting for this to be complete. So that's where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, with that, and seeing no further requests to speak from council or the public and the motion to support the staff recommendation, having made my councilmembers Armanio seconded by Councilmember Salinas, Madam City Clerk, while you call the role, and Councilmember Marquez has yes, has recused herself from this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Lambon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez recused. Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmembers Armanio? Mayor Halliday.
Yes, and the motion carries with six I votes and one recusal. And with that, we will now move on to item number 12, which is the regarding the La Vista Park design and we're being asked to adopt a resolution approving the park's final design subject to a California Environmental Quality Act amendment and addendum. And we will hear from, is he on Zoom? Public Works Director Mary?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Just want to remind you to text Councilmember Marquez to come back. And with that, I'll turn over this presentation to Alex Tat, who is the Associate Civil Engineer and the Project Manager for this project to make a very brief presentation and introduce other members of the project team.
Okay, I don't, I don't know that I, is she back?
She's back now.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and all. I will be presenting this item along with Elizabeth Lantern, the city's senior planner for this project, and also Surface Design, the city's design consultant for this project. Staff recommends council adopt the attached resolution approving the final design subject to the sequel addendum for this park extension. For this slide, I'll hand it over to Elizabeth to discuss the sequel addendum.
Hi, everyone. Downstairs now, still in the building. Elizabeth Lantern, Senior Planner. La Vista Park was originally approved by the city council as part of the La Vista Park Development Project, which included 179 single-family homes and a 30-acre park. So at the time, back in 2005, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, or what we call an ISMND, was completed for the project. It determined that with mitigation, the project would result in no significant environmental impacts. Now, since 2005, the residential portion of the project has been constructed and is now known as the Reserve Community, but the park has not yet been built. So as mentioned earlier tonight during the parcel group three item, the city has been afforded the opportunity to expand the park by over 20 acres through a development agreement with the parcel group three developer. So given that the original 2005 ISMND did not consider a park of this size, an addendum to the ISMND was prepared to determine whether this park extension is within the scope of what was analyzed in the 2005 environmental document. So the addendum prepared by consultant David J. Powers and Associates found that the park extension is within the scope of what was analyzed previously and would result in no new or more severe significant environmental effects. So as a result, no additional environmental analysis is necessary for this park extension. Alex?
Thank you, Elizabeth. The following slides will provide an overview of the park's design evolution. So this is the May 2018 conceptual design, which incorporated feedback from community meetings, a joint meeting with the city and hard board, which basically allowed Hard to approve this in April of 2018, this concept. And city council accepted this concept in May of 2018 and authorized staff to begin requests for construction proposals. And in July of 2020, staff provided a update to the council infrastructure committee. And this update, update incorporated geotechnical recommendations to ensure site stability and provide protection of the existing wetland area identified in the park extension area. And also, we revised the grading to eliminate dirt off all and reduce construction costs. In May of 2021, staff provided another update to the council infrastructure committee to to let them know that we actually sealed an existing man-made well on the site, which reduced the existing wetland area previously. And it went from about 5,000 square feet to just under 200 square feet shown here in the red dot. So this design preserved the smaller remaining wetland area and provided an opportunity to add park programming shown here from the reduction of the wetland area. And we continue to work with the adjacent parcel group three development, coordinating the western boundary of the park in this area here. Before I get on to the next steps in project schedules, I'll hand it over to Surface, the Surface Design Team to go over kind of the details of the final design and park programming. Ty?
You got James, sorry.
Hi, James.
Been enjoying it. Ty, yeah, if you can pull it up, this is great. Mayor and Councilmembers, it's really, again, you know, it's such an exciting park and to be able to expand that park since last time we talked and the opportunity here to show what some more room and and working around the Lombada elements that happen with projects of this scale and size and really having an outcome that is beneficial and offers us so much more to both the public and your constituents based on these things. So to start off with, this is the approved council plan that we had brought the last time to 2018. As you can see here, with the integrated parking, sports courts, soccer fields, running tracks, tot lots, you name it. We were able to integrate that into this landscape that is really about softness. If you hit the next slide, Ty. I know we're all late here, so but really trying to capture the rolling hills and the oak groves that were here previously and because it was a former rock quarry, to turn it back into this kind of lovely landscape that reflects both what had happened here and what was here in the past. Keep going, Ty. And that's through shaping and planting. Next. And really, the goal is to create a place for people to occupy, to have a really amazing regional park that that your whole citizenry could come to celebrate the Fourth of July or big concerts. And really, the topography, it's super steep as everyone keeps mentioning. But that's actually a benefit because people love to sit on slopes. They love to occupy and not be total center of attention, but the be a little bit of the looky-loo at the same time, but enjoy the whole regional views. As you can see, it's such a powerful thing. We can see all the way up to Oakland and San Francisco, skyline is all the way to the south is San Jose, but we really have the whole bay at our our feet. And so the beauty of that bay and orienting the park and the views and that experience to this special spot where we are in the in the world. And this is the existing site. As you can see, it's pretty much a graded pile of there's dirt that's been left over from different developments and from the original quarry. But it is lovely. Look at the the profile of the both the land and the water, and then you can see the land below. That's the site three that was in earlier this day. And you can see where that flat area is that is working pretty well. Right there. Thank you, Ty. And then out to the views out there. So this spectacular site and the opportunity of the park expanding and taking over this area here that you can see in front of you was real an opportunity. Now, it also came with its challenges of the wetland. But you know, you can always turn lemons into lemonade, and I think it's a really great spot of working with the wetlands, protecting it, and then allowing it to be a part of the expanded science connections to the other wetland that we have right now. But this is La Vista Park, which you can see it's the opportunities of tying into the both Tennyson, but up to the the trail, Ridge Trail Networks to the north, going up through to Douglas. And these are opportunities that prevailed themselves with a new acquisition of the land. And the idea here is to keep things soft, to keep them about nature, to keep them, especially the times that we've just gone through. The ability to connect with nature and to do it in a lovely way that feels like it's part of the land is the approach that we've taken with the park. And thinking about seasonality in, you know, planting with with wildflowers and grasses and reinforcing the sort of oak knolls and groves that would have been here previously are really the way that we're structuring this park, very simply, but very powerfully at the same time. So this is the park programming. As you can see, as we were here, we've pretty much been able to keep almost all the elements that we had previously in the park with a couple things that got a little bit difficult, the camera obscura. But other than that, and that was mainly budget issues, but pretty much everything else is incorporated in, as you can see here, the sort of various opportunities for different kinds of play. And then for different age groups, integration of parking within the within the park so that it's not a death by asphalt parking lot. It's actually part of the language of the park. It's soft. And we had the lower road, which I just want to call out right now because of the kind of changes now. It used to go down to 16th Street previously. And then it was brought up to pick up the residences that are up on to our northern boundaries. So we'll see how the the new park is changed up and given us a lot more opportunities. The big thing here was the wetland and where it was located and the impact on grading. And then also the generation of of amount of fill and accommodating on the site as Al said. Keep going. So this is the upper rim trail. Again, this becomes this beautiful datum that you get to see the regional landscape, but then also create a a protected zone focused inward focused park at the same time as being protected. The trail itself again integrates emergency vehicles and access for maintenance on this park. Just keep going, Ty. We've got a few. These are these are ones that we showed you previously, so you're probably aware of them. But the sports fields and garden paths and integrated sports, the amphitheater at the end are all straight in this plan. Keep going, Ty. We've all been there. So this is the big viewpoint on the on the top. The experience, you get to that magic point and you can look up and down and along the bay itself, the integration of sports courts, the opportunity to use projections and new technologies that can be easily integrated into a park on a temporary basis, but also expand the opportunity for for the city and to engage with its its community. Parts like this, and then they're easily accessed off some of the parking, these sort of plaza nodes, integrated shade structures, picnic tables, opportunities for food trucks to come up with the various vendors coming from from Hayward. And then the sense of play and shade, which is very important to create the correct, right kind of microclimates and environments and play. So we had several comments from the last round about designating sort of protected zones for different age groups fencing them in, just making sure that there's a level of protection, the integration of slides we had previously, but I think that might have missed some some of the elements that we're using, the topography we have to use them to integrate the slides. So not only are you sliding up and down, you're also climbing up and through the landscape and and getting that unique sort of experience. So this is the park as it was, as we showed it in 2018. This is the new expanded park, which is really great. Some of the things to just to note as we go through, Ty, you want to, if you can keep going. So this is the site plan here. It's a little bigger, so you can see it. Pretty much the 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 footprint of the old park is the previous 2018 park is still there, but it's really the area to the north and to the west that has been reconfigured. We now have connections to Douglas Street on the top. And we have connections through to Tennyson. And then a new connect, and that is part of the larger foothill trail. So we've been really having amazing collaborations with Hard. And what they brought to the table has been fantastic. And this park now integrates as your integral larger network within it is super exciting for us. We also integrated as part of those connections to the neighbors to the north and to the the development, new routes for emergency vehicles to access and move along the edge there to pick up and create safe trails to get out from the the upper regions of the park. What's great here is, sorry, that all of everything in pink is new. So the opportunities here with that extra grading, we now have these sort of flat areas. We have expanded trails. We have more basketball courts. We have a bike terrain park, which is super exciting. More expanded sort of science elements that are associated with the wetlands. The slides are integrated and we just have on the hammocks are more distributed across the property. So we've been able to, with this expansion, add things. The one thing that we did lose besides the camera obscure was the frisbee golf course. But luckily enough, that just turned down, turned, just turned into affordable housing in the school. So we're all happy about that, too. So next slide. Here's the additional and expanded program in detail. So you can see there's the wetland portion and how we shaped the grading around that. And then with the new BMX course below. Next. We've been able to add about 700, 7,000 linear feet or basically 1.5 miles of accessible trails. So the part, the park itself is expanded and its accessibility has expanded. It's also again created other opportunities, like we added a stair at the corner there. So it's total Stairmaster action. So if you want to get off the trail and run down to the next one, rather than making your own unsafe trail, we've sort of provided that to you. But that's going to be a really great course for workouts and those kinds of elements. As you can see, there where the expanded basketball court is and parking for that access for that piece right there, you can see that. Keep going. And yeah, that play area is actually huge. I'm sorry, Ty, you're right. We've got about 40,000 square foot more flat land to play with. So this is really great for different intermural events or parties or birthdays. Just a lovely flat place to go run around and go crazy on. Next. This is the bike train. So it's about one and a half acres. And so working with other interesting characters to make this the coolest course alive. So this really helps bring in a different constituents and to the thing, both young and old and in the middle. Next. The realigned road, as I mentioned here, so we've been working with making those bigger connections and so that they're tying into the existing park among the earth forms. We also have a pedestrian and vehicular connection to Tennyson right there. And there's additional parking at that moment as well. So we tried to balance out the parking in the new portion of the bigger thing. I'll show you a slide on that later. We've also got better connection to the Ridge Trail, be able to grade that edge. And and then again, that connection of the new emergency vehicle access that is really just fundamentally a great asset for for every both communities. Next. So parking, so we have we have the original parking. we have the original parking was in the parking lots there. Previously, we had 196 spaces, and then there was the street or the road parking, entrance drive parking, which is another 40. Now with the new expanded park, we've got, rather than having these big lots, we've got them sort of broken down. They're sort of layered into the circulation system, so they don't again, don't feel like parking lots. We've got another additional space, 12 spaces right at Tennyson. Another 12 spaces right at the start of the trail that goes up to the sports fields and also services the BMX bike area. On the other side of the road, we have another 35 spaces that are with the new sports courts and then also access some of the barbecue zones that we've integrated in this edge. And then there's a lower lot that comes off of 16th that helps alleviate that 21 spaces there. So additional, we've got an increase about 189 more spaces for a total of 316 spaces park wide. Part of the strategy that we're doing here is we don't want the cars to rule the day. So you can see where we've integrated where this is bollards. And so the bollards are really there to allow for some of the trail systems to be unimpeded by cars on every day kind of situation. But when we have an emergency or we have a big event, then those can be removed. And so further expansion can happen throughout the entire property. Comments that came up that I just wanted to address since the last time we talked, just to point out things like you guys asked for a second bathroom and we delivered there with another restroom to the south there. With two stalls, one accessible there, that's additional to the four stalls we had previously with two accessible things. The tot lot is now got a single entrance point, so mom and dad can see where the little tyke comes in and out. We've also integrated the water play feature in the top lot that was asked for. The shaded pavilion plaza that's adjacent at the top of the amphitheater with picnic tables and barbecues, we've enhanced those. And then again, with the discovery playground, we have one single point of entrance just to make sure that we can monitor those per request. And in our amphitheater, we've got basically about 3,200 people just sitting on the lawn to accommodate, which is super exciting for events that can expand further depending how much we want to occupy the sports field for larger events. I think we got up to almost 5,000 people with the park, so that's sort of exciting. And then the series of gardens, the native gardens that are integrated within that sort of whole network. Okay, and so just the comparison again, where we were in 2018 and the exciting new expanded park for 2021. And thank you again, and I know it's been a long evening, but we are super, super, super excited about this. And I have to say that Alex and all the staff has been absolutely amazing on this project in trying to figure out how to make things happen, how to get on budget, how to keep keyways working and soils balanced and and the expectations at the right level. So I applaud the city of Hayward on this amazing project. It's a pleasure working with you guys.
Thank you, James. Let me share my screen now to continue with the presentation and finish it out. All right. All right. So staff recommends that council adopt the attached resolution approving the La Vista Park final design and authorize staff to begin the phase two design construction drawings. The next steps include completing the 100% slide mitigation repair and 100% construction documents for construction bidding. And after completion of the 65% construction documents, staff will provide council with a cost estimate and fiscal impact update. And as far as schedule, the completion of the 100% slide mitigation repair construction documents is estimated in the spring of 2022 and start of the slide mitigation repair construction in the summer of 2022 and completion of the slide repair mitigation construction at the end of 2022. And then as far as completion of the 100% La Vista Park construction documents by fall of 2022 and started La Vista Park construction by spring of 2023 and completion of the park by summer of 2024. With that, I will hand over the floor for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And could you also unshare your screen?
Yes, sorry.
So. Oh, that thought, I I I are there any questions right now from council members? Any questions? Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the update. Great to see the expansion of the park. I'm just concerned, I'm glad to see it expanding, but you know, we've had many delays with many projects in our community. So I want to know if there's been any consideration with a phased approach and opening the park, so approaching it in phases rather than waiting for the entire completion of the park. So can staff speak to that concept, whether or not that's been considered?
Yes, that's a good question. So currently, we are planning to phase the construction of the slide mitigation repair. So that will come first to get that major work done. And then in the meantime, we're also preparing, also be preparing the 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 construction plans for the rest of the park. So that'll help as far as getting the work started. And then I'm not sure if you're asking about just phasing out different parts of the park. But that's kind of one way that we're using to kind of speed up the process.
Okay, and that would also coincide with opening just sections of the park as well? Are we going to have to wait for the entire project to be completed to actually utilize it?
Yeah, I think at the moment, we haven't really looked at the options of opening, you know, separate areas of the park. I think this this current idea is just to basically get get the major, the majority of the earthworks for the keyway, the slide mitigation done now. But we can certainly discuss, look at options for opening different sections of the park. If Director Marion has any thoughts on that as well.
All right.
Councilmember Marquez, we can definitely look into that option and see if we can expedite and open sections. That's something that we'll evaluate during the design process.
Okay, and I haven't received any negative questions or feedback. Has staff received anything as of publishing the staff report?
No, I personally haven't received any emails or calls or anything on this item, so.
Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
Yes, I wanted to hear more. Well, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to hear more about the art and how the art will be selected and what types of art were we thinking? I did see something projected, but just wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure, I don't know if Alex, if you want me to respond, but I think Councilmembers, we're looking at like an opportunity here because of the scale of the park to have different kind of technologies, especially being in the Bay Area that we could project or use those kinds of elements for art. Physical art across the park is something I think that could also be integrated into the the larger context of the park. That component has, there's we've created lots of places for that component to happen, but I think that's another layer that needs to happen on top of this park. So I'm so happy you're bringing it up.
Councilmember Andrews will be bringing information to council and ask for counsel and advice and approval of the city council regarding the arts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lambon.
Thank you. Just one question if I could, and thank you very much for the for the work on this. The question was noted the removal of the dog park due to space considerations and the addition of a neighborhood park and wondering if there's any logic in having the the dog park space be integrated into the neighborhood park or are those compatible at all, or can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, Ty and James, I'm not sure if you guys have any input on the current design and maybe we can incorporate the suggestion.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further council questions, I'm going to open public comment on this item. So anyone who would like to speak on this item, I don't, there's no one left in the council chambers and I'm not seeing that any attendees want to speak. Madam City Clerk, you aren't seeing anyone either?
My mayor, I'm not aware of any requests to speak.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close public comment and move on to Councilmember Lambon.
Thank you.
Did you, did you intend to?
I did mean to buzz in. I didn't expect to be first, so sorry, didn't mean to be. Anyway, so it's really hard to contain my enthusiasm for this, so I won't even try. Really excited about the work, really appreciate the evolution of this project, the incorporation of community feedback and and the idea that this place will be in our community is just outstandingly exciting. A couple of thoughts as we move forward. So with that, I'm happy to move the item. Sorry, really? Okay, thank you. It was a Councilmember Wahab, I think.
Yes, Councilmember Wahab?
All right, thank you. And then just a couple of thoughts moving forward for exploration. I appreciate the the consideration potentially of the dog park, the consideration of the phasing, as Councilmember Marquez mentioned. I appreciate, this isn't really a change, just a reflection of something that's already happening. I appreciate that there's a balance in a very thoughtful balance in this design that balances both safety as well as light pollution and having some dark skies elements to that. I think that's really exciting. And I think there's a couple of things that came to mind about that are probably more H lack conversations, but since we're talking park, I'll just put them in here as a placeholder. One is green waste collection in our parks. There was some comment about recycling collection and right now green waste isn't collected in our parks. And the other one is, I did hear from the community about parks in the El Rancho area. And so I think we need to revisit that just to keep our parks balanced throughout the city. And I'll remind us that that we had agreed to have Councilmember Vendel listed as an emeritus on this project in whenever the signage goes up. And then the last one, and this is, I'm saying this, and I realize that this is not a small ask. It's a very complicated thing. But I wonder in our conversations with with the Mueca tribe and our evolving understanding of racial equity and and yeah, of racial equity and undoing past harms. If there's some logic to the concessions to the park, to the land being run by native peoples, being, you know, rematriation, I know is something that the city of Albany is looking at. I just wonder what makes sense. And I I say this in a in a vague way because I don't know what everybody's capacity is or even what people would want. And I won't speak for folks, but I wonder as we start to eventually move to the programming part of this park, if there's an opportunity within the conversations with the existing conversations with the tribe, if there's an opportunity to have collaboration and perhaps some equity and reparation component of this. I'll leave it there as food for thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the motion and for those comments. Councilmember Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Lambon, on acknowledging the tribes and just wanting to understand if that is something that we can look into as part of memorable memorable art component or some somehow they can be involved in that decision making would also be something I would be interested in hearing more about. I think for the park this size, we need to do something that is not going to be art, just for the sake of saying we have art, I want something that identifies Hayward. I frequently reference the the Truth is Beauty statue that is in San Leandro and things that are something that is going to be a destination for people to go to and want to take a picture next to. So I think that's really important for us to think about that as we have these spaces. So looking forward to continuing our conversation and if we can acknowledge people who hold this land prior to us, that would be really helpful.
I see them. Yes, thank you for that. Okay, and Councilmember Marquez?
I thank you, Mayor. Not to sound like a broken record, but I concur wholeheartedly with Councilmember Lambon's comments as well as Councilmember Andrews. I'll echo a statement I know she's used in the past as we want to make sure that this is a destination park that has an Instagrammable photo opportunity. So I want to make sure that we capture that. I also would love to see something with maybe an H component, just something that symbolizes Hayward. But also really appreciate and respect the comments made in regard to the native people that held this land that we do need to honor and respect. So it would be awesome to incorporate that. And I don't know how I missed the dog park issue, but thank you for bringing it up, Councilmember Lambon. I think there are three or four dog owners on this council and and that is something that is lacking. We don't have enough opportunities for our dogs in our community, so hopefully we don't lose sight of that. But great work. Thank you for the updates and I'm happy to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, and Mr. Lord can correct me, but I think that it's not that dogs will not be allowed in the park. They but this was going to be an off-leash area for dogs. Is that correct? Yeah, so we will still have dogs, but they will have to have. Yeah, okay. And with that, if there are no further requests to speak, I will on this motion by Councilmember Lambon to approve the staff recommendation with some additional excellent comments, but this park is a long way from being finished. And thank you, Mr. Lord, and thank you to our staff too for their work on this. So the motion by Councilmember Lambon, seconded by Councilmember Wahab. And I would just say that you know, I do like the landmark idea and well, some of the other suggestions that have been made and anyway, I think that thought went out of my head. So we will go to Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews? Councilmember Lambon?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Salinas? Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Sermenyo? Mary Halliday?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion carries with seven. Yes, I vote. Everybody was here for this one. All right, that brings us at the end of a very long evening to council reports and announcements. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. I will, I do have one, though. Any other council members before I go? Okay, I go ahead with that. You have one? Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly report that I was happy to attend the League of California Cities, as I know my colleagues did as well. And really had some great conversations about housing and And really had some great conversations about housing and other issues in our city and looking forward to continue collaborative work. Thanks.
Okay, and yes, I also attended the League of California Cities annual conference last week in Sacramento in person in the brand new, I think it's called Safe Credit Union Convention Center. But will probably be known more as the Sacramento Convention Center. And I was as the voting delegate and representative from the city of Hayward to the General Assembly, I want to report back to you on the three items before the General Assembly that we voted on a couple of, a couple of meetings ago or well, maybe even last week, right? Okay. And so on the the bylaws changes that really were very much opening up the Board of Directors to more representation from the diversity task, diversity caucuses that the league has, that item was approved. The item on on asking the legislature to give the California Public Utilities Commission more money to specifically force the or inspect railroad properties in the state and to get them to actually step up and since they have oversight, not inspect the cop properties and force the railroads to clean them up when that is needed. That one passed. It was watered down a bit by kind of taking the California Public Utilities Commission out of the equation, but still asking the legislature to somehow provide money for enforcement of keeping the railroad property, you know, in a good condition. And then finally, on probably the most interesting and controversial and maybe an important one, I think, was on the topic of asking the legislature to pass to work with the League of California Cities to pass legislation to look at the distribution of online sales tax and and make it more equitable so that all cities who have their roads run over by, you know, people, delivery trucks delivering goods that people have ordered online get some share of that sales tax, not just those few cities that have built huge fulfillment centers. I have to report disappointingly that that resolution was quite watered down to the point where the legislature was taken out of it altogether. We're not asking the legislature to do anything. We're kicking the whole matter back to the league's Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, which I do serve on as a member. So I will be sure to be speaking up there about the desire of our council and probably many others throughout the state to really take a serious look at this and really ask the legislature and try to work with the legislature to do that. So that is my report on the voting at the annual conference. And with that and seeing no other hands raised here, we will move on to our adjournment, which this evening, we're going to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory and in honor of Armand Harris. Armand grew up in Hayward, graduated from Hayward High in 1972, went on to Chabot College. He had skills in theater, photography, track and field and public speaking and is quite well known, maybe best known for his expertise in gardening and cooking. And he co-founded Cooking Magic, a volunteer organization that provided cooking, food safety and food preservation training to clients at local food pantries and affordable housing complexes. And also developed a model for urban agriculture that brought healthy organic produce to over to hundreds of people in our community. And Armand, I think, at times experienced not having permanent housing. And he just was a very dynamic person who worked to change the perception of homelessness as well as to empower people on the streets to use their skills. I want to thank Councilmember Lambnun for bringing this to our attention that he had passed away. And so I will ask staff to work with his family and I think through Councilmember Lambnun, maybe she can provide the connections to let them know that we are honoring Mr. Harris tonight and will would be willing to work with the family to plant a tree somewhere in Hayward in his honor. And with that, in memory of Armand Harris, this very unusual, but I think productive meeting of the Hayward City Council is adjourned.